It being May 21st at 7:00 PM, I'd like to ask for call the meeting to order and move for an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Vignani and seconded by Ms. Canfield. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 21st meeting, first meeting after our annual elections, so we'd like to welcome Mrs. Karen Connolly to the board. Welcome, Karen, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if you want to say anything. Give me one minute. Give me a minute. Yeah, sixty seconds.
I can do it faster than that. I just want to thank everyone who voted this past Saturday. It's very gratifying when people come out and vote, and I would also like to acknowledge John Danahue, who seat I'm taking, and for all the hard work he did for so many years, and I'm very happy to be here, even though some people think I'm crazy.
Crazy to do the job.
Yes, well, that.
Crazy to step up. Well, we welcome you. Glad to have you. I just want to congratulate everybody out there that ran this weekend. It was a close race. A lot of races were close, so thank you for running. Please continue to be involved. We had a new school committee member, so Nicole Brandolini, who is from the next generation, which is great to see some new folks step forward and take part in local government. So congratulations to all, and really excited about the senior center as well, so I'm sure at the end of the meeting we'll talk a little bit about that. So congratulations to that group as well. They worked really, really hard to get that done in a short timeframe, so it's great news that we can move forward on that. So with the first order of business, since this is a new board, is the reorganization of the board as the vice chair. Just opened up for discussion. I know we need to assign a new chairperson and then also a new vice chairperson. So any...
Move to nominate Tony Vignani as chairman?
All right, there's a motion to nominate Mr. Vignani as chair.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Canfield. Discussion?
Well, I... You want to go first?
I have a lot to say, so I'll go last.
(laughing). I'm just kidding. Welcome to the board, Karen. I wanted to jump in because we have two members of this board that have served a very long time, and I have been honored to serve with them, and for the next three years, anyway, I'll be here, and I think Tony has brought a perspective that is very necessary, especially as we are in these tight budgetary times, so I think he'll make a great chair.
Well said. Anything else? Do I have a motion as second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Does that mean you do the vice chair?
You're on a roll. Keep going.
Okay, all right. Do I have a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Sean Harris.
Second.
Would you like to say something, Mr. Harris?
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Vignani. Discussion? No? You ready, Sean? You ready?
Thirty-second time he's been vice chair?
Yeah.
No, I just should have said something a minute ago. I was kidding, but a lot of folks don't realize how much more work it is to be chairman, and I just want to thank Tony for stepping up, you know, for it's just probably twice or three times the amount of work. If there's an event, I don't care if it's during the week or the weekend, and none of us can make it, usually the chairman has to go, no matter what. So you make a lot of sacrifices. You make even a little more or a lot more as chairman, so thanks, Tony.
And strategically shows those comments after we all approve his nomination, so that's great.
We all get one vote.
I know. All right, so there being no discussion, motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Vignani for vice chair. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that's the reorganization. Tony, now we're going to switch seats. Do we do what?
Clerk? Yeah, the clerk is...
Oh, the clerk. Forget about the clerk. Box pick. Okay. Do I have a nomination? Is anybody interested in being the clerk?
I would be honored to continue to serve if you will have me.
Really?
I nominate Karen Canfield.
I'll second that.
Continue being the clerk.
Second.
Nominated by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Karen.
We appreciate it. It's an honor. All right, so with that, we will change seats, and Mr. Vignani will conduct the rest of the meeting.
We'll stay put.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you switch it up if you're nominated.
I was a nice student, I mean, are you okay with that?
Fine.
Oh, there you go.
Well, we get the nameplates moved and everything.
All righty. They have everybody calling them Maura.
They might notice the difference.
Great. Well, thank you guys for nominating me. I'll try and do a good job. The next item on the agenda is walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins here this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Jennifer Kuhn, Jennifer Kuhn, 20, Cary, Litchfield Lane, and I have two quick questions. Under one, I wanted to ask Karen, new member of the board, what your opinion was on the new senior center, if you were actually for the senior center vote or against it. I understand that Karen and Maura actually were not in favor, and I was just wondering if you had an opinion.
I was in favor of it.
You're in favor?
Yes.
Okay. And then my second question is, I was wondering if I could get some kind of schedule for the pipe replacement, for the water pipe replacement. We've been doing uspicking and flushing, and I want to know when they're actually going to be replaced, so we're not just putting a band-aid on it, we're actually replacing them.
I don't think we have an exact schedule for you, but it will be discussed here, and it'll all be public when it's going to happen, so...
So currently today, there is no schedule to start next week, this summer, or in the fall, to replace any pipes.
No.
Yes. There is.
Yeah, so that's not correct. There is a plan to finish up the final phase, which I think we'll turn to Kevin in a second evening of the day, so what I was talking to, there's not a plan to do the next stage yet.
Okay.
So Kevin, do you want to give some sort of outline of...
What we've been doing is we started on Oceanside Drive. We're putting a temporary line in place so that we can deactivate the old line and then put the new line in place of the old line. So a lot of people have already called and said, "There's guys out there saw cutting Oceanside Drive." There's a couple deliveries of pipe, there's a Conex box, and there's pieces of equipment there. That is part of replacement of that water line. I believe if we don't have it up already, it will be within the next week or two showing the contractor's schedule, what they plan on doing. That'll include Man Hill Road, it'll also be Gannett. A lot of what we're doing is service tie-overs. We're taking the services off the old line, there's two lines in the road, taking it off the Castine line and putting it on the newer line. Newer line might still be 40 years old or 50 years old, but we're removing that 100-year-old line. So the schedule, we track all the water lines that we have, and it depends on the funding. We have a worst-case scenario line that we go after, and it's funding every year through the budget process.
So is Phase 1 currently on the website?
Phase 1?
Phase 1, that we're currently doing right now. Is there information on the town website?
We're actually on Phase 3C. And we do not know if the entire schedule is on the website yet. Could it be on the water side or the engineering side?
So currently, the Oceanside is not online. There's nothing about that and where you're going next. There's no...
There's nothing on where we're going next. Correct. Director.
Just with the... And how many phases are there?
Director, questions this way, ma'am.
Oh, one second.
Okay.
How many phases? I was in...
The phases will be based on whatever the funding is. The initial plan had five phases, and that's all been talked about for the last several years, of reevaluating what the next phase will be. So that's probably something this board will discuss, but not tonight.
Okay, so I'm interested in maps, where they're going, phases, and obviously financial. Okay?
We'll be talking about it, I would guess, a lot over the next year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Should I just make a quick comment?
Yeah.
You stated that Maura and I were not in favor of the senior center. That's not quite accurate. We voted against the shift to the plan that was put forward. Once that decision was made, I know, I think we all agreed, that we would, as a board, support the proposal that was on the warrant. So we were in support of the proposal that went forward after we had our discussion.
So I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting prior to the town meeting, and I believe it was understood that there was a 3-1 vote.
Only because Ms. Moore and Mrs. ...
Correct.
What's her name?
Correct.
Was not there, yes. Because I was absent, and that was to decide whether or not to move it to the new location.
Okay, and I did inquire at the Board of Selectmen's office, and was informed that it was a 2-3 vote. I just wanted to inquire.
A little bit of the confusion, you're taking a little bit out of context. So the discussion was, do we stick with the old plan or the new plan? It wasn't about whether they wanted a senior center or not want a senior center. So their discussion, at that point in time, we were discussing, do we knock down all of gates, or do we keep gates and go? And that was what that vote was on.
Okay, so at the Board of Selectmen meeting prior to the town meeting, there were three in favor and one not in favor.
Yep.
Okay. And now we have four in favor and one not in... I mean, excuse me, three in favor and two not in favor.
Well, now we have an old one that's passed.
It doesn't matter, different questions. I just wanted to understand, actually, where Karen and how everybody stood on the board with the vote that we voted on. Okay?
Which we both voted in the affirmative on town floor, so that should tell you that as well.
There you go. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Are there any other walk-ins? Great, so seeing on, we will move on to the report of the town administrator.
It's just got a little shorter because we go over the Oceanside pipe replacement. Part of the big one is Egypt Beach parking lot. If you go by there, you see that is not complete. We are delayed by the weather. We had six straight days of rain, so there's been no compaction, there's no ability to get that down, so it is running behind. It needs to dry out. Once it gets dried out, they'll put it down. The other issue now is, because of the rain, the paving schedule is now all off, so we're not sure when we're going to get those pavers back. We'll get it up as quickly as we can with the process material and get it all packed down. If we get delayed on the paving, we'll try to open the parking lot without the paving as soon as we can. It does not look like it'll be ready for this weekend, it's just too wet down there. But they are working as quickly as possible down there, and we'll get that up as fast as we can. Again, if we have an issue with the paving, we'll pack it down, we'll open it until we get the paving down there and get it going. As soon as we know, we'll let everybody know.
Who's paving it, Jim?
It's actually Steve Norton that is doing the work.
Right.
And they're the same guys that do the water, and...
Are they paving it, or are they summoning that out to...
They're zoning it out, and I thought the last I heard was Cellar or another company. Our spec is pretty solid, so whoever paves it, you know, we'll be watching the thickness and...
Great, thank you.
So Jim, just when you say you don't know, you know it's not going to be this weekend, but it won't be July 5th?
No.
It'll be within the next week or so after that?
We'll get the parking lot done, all the work, notwithstanding the pavement. That'll be done, depending on the weather, we should have that done by the end of next week.
Okay, good.
But that's going to be where the paving companies, because they've all been pushed back, every other jar's been pushed back.
Tony, can we put something out that just says that Egypt parking lot is closed for this weekend?
Yep.
Because folks don't always drive by and know what's happening.
The webbing app last that should be going out today.
Perfect. Thank you.
People's ready to watch today.
Want to put an electronic signboard down there, too, Kev? We can... We'll put a signboard down there, too, just letting people know.
Any other questions on Egypt? Great.
A couple more things. The water main flushing is continuing. We're doing that all over town. I know they flushed Front Street last week about 3:00 in the morning, so they are hitting all the places on town, starting in what they think are the worst areas and moving around. When we're finished that, again, we will flush until the reservoir stops overflowing. Once it stops, we will stop flushing, and then when it's done, we'll get a report to the board where the flushing was done, where the picking was done, and then we're going to do the survey that we talked about earlier to see if people are seeing a difference with all the work we've done. I can't imagine on some of those dead ends that we talked about earlier, that people aren't seeing a huge difference in their water quality, because those pipes haven't been touched since they went in. So that's continuing, and the water department is doing a lot of good work on that. Project that's been in the works for quite a while, the school crossing out front here as part of the middle school project, that bid will open on June 6th.
Yes.
So we'll finally get that school crossing up over the summer. It'll be in place for next year.
Yay.
The last thing, you mentioned the senior center, it passed. The next step for the senior center project will be going before the planning board, and then the architect will start on the bid documents, getting those ready and going out to bid. So once they finish the planning board, and the planning board makes whatever tweaks they're going to make, then the architect will get the bid documents together and get ready to go out to bid.
Any questions on...
Yeah, is it on the planning board agenda this week?
This week, I think. I believe so. Isn't it on this weekend?
No. It's not.
No, it's not.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. You just talked about it this morning, I'm just confused, but...
It's the 23rd of June.
Will be when that's before you again?
Yes, and...
Sound good?
Projected bid opening date at 2...
You're probably talking construction in October-ish.
All right.
Starting around there. By the time you get the bid documents done, I can't tell you, Sean, off the top of my head, we're going to file sub-bids.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
Maybe electrical, maybe a filed sub-bid in that project.
So in the fall, with any luck?
Yeah, you're talking the fall.
All right.
Get the bid documents done and get it out to bid by the end of the summer.
Great, thanks, Tony.
Two quick comments there. One, you brought this up at the last meeting, you said it again now, the water flushing, that we're able to do it. We haven't done a lot in the past, and again, this is water that's not going over the dam into the ocean that we're using to flush these pipes, which is a huge improvement to us cleaning these pipes and getting them more active, so I think that's a great idea. And then the senior center, you mentioned the bids documents about that. You know, the board will also be discussing the next steps that we have to do in light of the fact that the senior center passed, like what are we going to do with the other gates building, what are we going to do with other parking and other issues on that property? So that'll be coming up before us, and we'll be discussing that in the upcoming weeks as well, so...
Yep, and that's all I have for tonight, I want it to be quick and easy.
The old building.
One second. One second?
The old building. That's it. The old building.
The old gates.
Yeah. No, the old council on aging. Down the road, down the road.
Right, Sean, you're a good point. The old council on aging building, what are we going to do that as well?
Down the road.
Yeah.
I have one question.
One second. Ms. Burman?
The meeting for our progress, senior center is the 27th of June. I apologize.
June 27th of the senior center, planning. Thank you. Great.
I have a question.
Just your name and address.
Jennifer Kuhn, 20, Cary, Litchfield Lane. Is there a date for the demolition?
No.
No.
That'll be part of the bid.
That'll all be part of the bid.
And nothing will start before October? Where are you thinking?
I'm just guessing, by the time they get the bid documents done, they get the bid documents out, they've all gone through them, they've awarded it, October's probably a good time. It could be September, it could be, but it's going to be in the fall before we start doing anything.
I also want to mention that there's certain communities that actually will let residents or carpenters or whatever go in and actually dismantle the building and reuse the windows, the doors, whatever they want. They have a certain time with their lives. Go in and take and dismantle the buildings, probably that might be a consideration.
Interesting, yeah, we'll think about it. Great, anybody else? Aye. We'll move on to our scheduled items then. Right on time, is that my...
So efficient. So why we elected you chair.
So we have a few recognitions this evening. Is someone going to come up and do these, Jim, or you want me?
The only one I think Chief Stewart is going to do, the one for Terry Duggan at Dispatch, the one for the library we're going to put on.
Yep, that one's on hold, yep.
Yep.
Chief, you want to...
It's my pleasure to have been asked to come and acknowledge Dispatcher Terry Duggan on 35 years of service. She'd been obviously with us for 35 years. She worked out of the old building when we didn't have none. One, it was 1-2-1-2 line, whether it was an emergency or a business call, and you know, she's been, she's seen the technological changes in dispatch from, you know, handwritten and typed logs to...
Punch cards.
Yeah, to the most complicated of a recent system, the new generation 911 system, which she's learned. Most recently, she was one of the first dispatches who was cross-trained to be able to handle police and fire. You know, for the bulk of her career, she's been a police dispatcher and a 911 call answerer. For, you know, and as I've said before to the board over the years, I get the utmost respect for our 911 call answers. I go back and I listen to a lot of calls, and I'm telling you, they do a great job, and Terry has done a tremendous job for a long time.
Thank you.
Karen, you look very uncomfortable, but if you could say something before we do...
Nope, that's okay.
Well, I've been, the board will speak as well, but I want to thank you. That's such a critical role in the whole emergency care in the town. Unfortunately, I've had to call it, you know, several times over the last 15, 20 years that I've been here, and I don't know who I'm talking to and know what he does, but I know it's always been great service, and for doing something for 35 years like that and doing a great job and going through technology, you know, we applaud you and we thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to parlay that, or...
Yeah, I mean, Terry, thank you. Your service, your dedication to the community is incredible, and to stay in that job for 35 years is really a testimony to your perseverance, your professionalism. You know, there have been a lot of changes, and I'd love to hear, too, like how you think, you know, being there in the last two years has changed the way in which you do your job and how it's enhanced. I think it would be interesting if you would allow her to speak for a minute, and if you don't want to, that's okay, but I think it'd be really nice to hear from, you know, a veteran dispatcher on the change.
It's been a lot of changes, definitely. Learning the fireside, just there, I mean, you're trying to learn it one way, and five different people, you have to do it their way. It's like, so you never know, and you just do the best that we can.
You adapt. Well, that's why you're so successful. You're an adapter.
Terry has promised me she's not retiring until next January 20th, which is great, because we have a lot of new, young dispatches, and Terry's part of the training process up there, and, you know, I'm fortunate to have her for another several months.
Congratulations.
Not only were they transitioning from the old station to the new station, from police and fire desks to public safety desks, they also had a transition to the next-gen 911 system, which is the next generation of the 911, which includes text 911, cellphone 911, so, you know, they made the leap to the new station, then they're making the leap to a whole new technology, so it's been a lot going on up there in the past couple years, and they've handled it flawlessly.
Is it getting any, does it, now that maybe the dust has settled, any easier?
No.
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 Wow. Well, I just want to say thank you. I just can picture sitting there, not knowing what that, you know, the 911 call could be a mistake or could be life or death, right there. That's just the not knowing, and then you have to be so calm. We all hear about them on the news when something goes wrong. It can be in California, but they always have that, you're on tape, and so, a lot of pressure. Thank you.
I'm sure you're helping right now.
Well, no, she's there.
Well, thank you very much. We do have a little token of appreciation for you, so if you don't mind coming up and taking this box off our hands. Well, first, I want to congratulate you. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Terry.
You don't get one, though.
That could be candy, you might want to share.
That looks like Welch Company paper. Welch Company paper.
Yes.
It looks like it.
It isn't.
Couldn't be enough in there for 35 years.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so we'll keep moving right along. We have a joint appointment for the Situate Housing Authority, with the Situate Housing Authority. Let me see, some members here.
Good evening, congratulations.
Hello, Stephen. Tammy.
Thank you. Who's the chair? Are you, Steve, you're still the chair? So if you want to kind of, do you want to give an overview, or do you, I mean, there was a, I'll give a quick overview, then you can fill in all the blanks. So there was a member that resigned, and they were the state appointee, and they had to be reappointed by the state within 120 days, and if they're not, then it comes before us.
Correct.
And the Board of Selectmen can appoint somebody, and that's where they are, and you've nominated somebody, and that's what we're here to discuss right now.
Correct, yeah, so it'd be a joint appointment between our board and the Board of Selectmen for, it's a term of four years and eight months for the replacement of the state appointee. So with that, you know, we shouldn't have to be back before you anytime soon in order to, you know, go do that. Jill's been on our board for many years now. This is the first time that we've been here, and she's great, and I look forward to, you know, have her continue back on the board and to, you know, know that we have her for just, you know, another five years is, you know, is great, so...
A relief.
Great. And the reason why it's that long is because she resigned right after her term started, right?
It was Michael Collins.
It was Michael Collins.
Yeah, he'd been on the board for many years, and, yeah, so his schedule and, you
know, whatnot, you know, was conflicting with, you know, him being able to serve, so, you know, it worked out, you know, that he needed to resign, so that brings us here tonight.
Does anyone have any questions for Steve or for Jill?
I just have one.
Yeah.
Is there an opening on the board, or are you a four-member board and then one state appointee? I always get...
So there's one additional opening. So, there's one additional opening. We're waiting for DHCD is making some kinds of changes to whether or not there should be a tenant representative. So, we're waiting to see what the outcome on that with the legislature, you know, for that other opening, you know, and then we can be able to go from there. But we do have enough of a quorum in order to be able to conduct business.
You just re-elected, right, John?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say I've known Jill for over 20 years, very well, and I know that she's very dedicated to this board, so I agree with her. I think she'd do great representing us at the state.
Great. And there's a lot going on clearly in your arena, so glad to have seasoned people that know what they're doing and take us to the next level. Great, so at this point, I think we need a motion. Oh, no, do we have to do?
Roll call.
Motion first and then I'll do the roll call.
Okay. So, can I have a motion?
Move to appoint Jill Cafrey as the state appointee to the Board of Situate Housing Authority for a term of four years and eight months, effective May 24, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Scampfield, I haven't done it yet. Second by Mr. Harris for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stephen Coulter?
Yes.
John Dwayne?
Yes.
Jamie Durante?
Yes.
And Jill Cafrey.
Yes.
And the Board of Selectmen, Karen Kitwell?
Karen?
Karen Podlick?
Yes.
Laura Carron?
Yes.
Sean Harris?
Yes.
And Anthony Lindau.
Yes. So, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations and best of luck.
Congratulations, Jill.
Congratulations, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, we have an outdoor entertainment permit for the Methodist Church. Bob? Amweg?
Amweg, yes.
Amweg, great.
Yeah. I attend the Harbor United Methodist Church and we would, we're participating in the first Friday events that the township is hosting this year and we'll be hosting a fish fry.
That's a great idea.
And we'd like a permit for outdoor entertainment on the premises of the church for three nights, March 7th, July 5th, and September 6th.
I think it's June 7th.
I'm sorry, June 7th.
July 5th and September 6th.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay.
Yes.
So, there's a typo in the, in the motion, so whoever makes it, just be sure. So, tell us a little bit about it. So, you're going to have a fish fry open to the public?
It'll be open to the public. We hope to have it well-attended. We're trying to reintroduce the church to the community and be an active participant in the community events.
Great.
And we feel it's a family-friendly dinner, very affordable dinner as an alternative to people that might not want to participate and spend a great deal of money at some of the other local restaurants.
Great. Do you know what the price is or?
It'll be $10 for the meal.
Right.
And children, I believe, are $6.
Right.
Right. There'll be three events with the outdoor entertainment. On June 7th, there'll be a four-piece band, a Doc Ellis. I believe he's a local band that many of you might know. I'm new to the area, so I don't know these. On July 5th, there'll be a Sean Caulfield. It's a solo singer, guitar and vocals. And on September 6th, there'll be Talking Machine, which is acoustic guitar and two singers, a male and a female singer.
What are the hours and?
6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
6:00 to 8:00 p.m.?
Yes.
And is the first one amplified? Is Doc Ellis probably amplified, I would guess?
I believe that's amplified, yes.
And then?
I believe they're all amplified.
You said the second one was acoustic.
The third one is an acoustic guitar. I don't know, there's, the second one, Sean Caulfield, is a guitar and vocals. I don't know if it's acoustic or not.
Right. Any questions?
I see that you notified the abutters, so no concerns there? Okay. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, Doc Ellis is pretty toe-tapping. You're going to have trouble shutting it down at 8 o'clock, but I think it's a great marriage to the activities in the harbor and gives families an opportunity to participate and walk over. I think it's a really inspired idea.
Good. It's a Friday evening, it's from 6:00 to 8:00.
First Fridays, right.
That's great. No further comments? Can I have a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Bob Amweg of the Harbor United Methodist Church located at 55 First Parish Road for live music on June 7th, July 5th, and September 6th, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
That's a motion by Mrs. Curran, second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Any abutters here? Don't see any. From board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, enjoy.
Please.
I'm going.
June 6th?
I got dancing shoes.
Toe-tapping?
Toe-tapping.
Wow.
I just thought of something. Can I, Mr. Chair, may I? Did you say Friday nights?
Yes.
Isn't June 6th a Thursday night?
No, it's the 7th.
Oh.
It's the first Friday.
I did say June 7th. Okay, good. Okay. I hopefully read it right. Okay, you scared me. Sorry.
Okay.
Never mind.
You guys are tough crap.
Well, I wanted to make sure we did it right.
All right, moving right along then. The next item is a discussion of vote for the Knights of Columbus Carnival Special Event. Mark Brady and Bill Limbacher.
No, not the first time. In case somebody doesn't know me, I'm Mark Brady.
And Bill Limbacher.
Thanks, guys. Want to, for those thousands of people watching, give them a quick recap of what you're asking for?
Yeah, we're asking for our ability to have our annual Knights of Columbus Carnival this year from July 9th through the 13th. Fireworks on Friday and Saturday night. This is our 66th year.
Wow.
It'll run from about 7:00 o'clock till no later than 11:00 o'clock at night.
Great.
The carnival will come into town very early on Monday morning, set up. We've already talked to the DPW about their new regulations and so forth and agreed to a plan for the carnival on them. We're still going to meet with the Sergeant Gil Martin to go over the police setup and so forth, so.
Right. So, we did get a report from all the departments where they gave their comments and nothing too out of the norm. I know they did request for the generator to go in a certain place. Is that where you always put it anyways or?
They did that last year, yeah. We moved it and put it where they asked us to put it, yes.
Good. And where are the vehicles? Where are they going to park all the vehicles after they set up?
Not on the lot.
Right, do they go back by the wastewater treatment?
I think last year they went down to the Marshfield Fairgrounds.
Oh, you did, okay. Any questions from the board?
We're going to just maybe bag those signs. Did that help last year, the one-way? I know it was a concern and I don't think, ended up, didn't do it?
Ended up changing it, I don't think. I think at the beginning they were going to and then at the last minute they said they'd let the traffic flow that way and people realized, yeah, it can go up the other way.
And it worked.
And if they want to, we can do that, so.
No, I just didn't know if that's something you did last year and if it was success or not.
It was planned, I remember at the last minute it kind of changed.
All right. The one-way?
They can't, right? That has to, right in front of CDS has to be both ways.
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm talking, in the back.
Yeah.
So, just, we're going to leave it the way it is.
Doesn't it have to, you can't go around by the van stand?
No, no, no.
So, you have to make, oh, is it only one way in?
Yeah, so you'd just be coming in from the movie theater and then going out the other way.
Oh, is that, we didn't make it both ways?
Well, we, Mark and I had talked about it and I guess you didn't do it. So, I, there was talk maybe to make it go both ways for, just during the carnival, but I guess it worked out, just the one, can leave it the way it is.
There weren't any issues, yeah.
Good.
Questions for comments?
Nope. It's a great cause. I know we usually give you this opportunity to sort of share what you give back to the community as a result of this, not putting you on the spot, but if you wanted to share any information.
Yeah, I mean, the Knights of Columbus is basically set up to help the community of Situate. Everything we do is to give back. This is our main fundraiser to support our, you know, building and so forth so that we can have the opportunity to do things for people such as Community Christmas, Boy Scouts, all these youth athletic teams, all the high school teams, food pantry. We've given to basically everybody. The use of our building also is a big part of it too, because a lot of these places don't have their own places to meet and have events and we let them use it too, so. It's, and this is what really keeps the engine running, so.
Thank you.
Very important.
Thank you for that.
And you're being a little bit modest there because you guys give to anything. So, if something pops up and there's a family in need or if there's a situation in town, the Knights are always right there first to donate to help.
Absolutely.
So, it's a great cause and like you said, this is the big event, so.
This is it.
And the big one.
Very good.
Great. No further questions?
I just appreciate that you have fireworks on my birthday every year, so thank you for that.
We actually had a call this year. Somebody was planning their reunion, their class reunion, knowing the carnival was because they wanted to have it during the fireworks.
Excellent. And it's a business generator.
There you go, yeah.
Motion?
Yes, please.
Move to approve a special event permit to William Limbacher for the Knights of Columbus Carnival from July 10th, 2018 to July 14th, 2018, with setup on July 9th and takedown on July 14th in Cole Parkway pending certificate of liability insurance.
Second.
All right.
Those dates correct?
That's what I was looking at.
The 9th is Tuesday, that's the date. It runs the 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th, correct?
So, is it set up on July 8th?
Yes.
All right. Amend to July 8th as a setup date?
And what day did you say? Clean up on the 13th?
Takedown on the 14th?
14th, yes.
Yep, yep. That's correct.
So, that's a motion by Ms. Curran, second by Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Further discussion? Any in the audience? Any on the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, 5 to 0. Hope for good weather.
We have one more, we have one more to do, which is the special event fee waiver.
Let me get back to that.
Oh, yeah.
So, there is an event fee that we charge and you're asking us to waive the fee? What's the amount? Does someone have that?
I believe it's $100 a day.
I think it's $100, right?
Yeah.
There's no fee in that.
Yeah.
Is that what it is, Lorraine? $100 a day?
It's $100 for the event.
$100 for the event?
Yes.
Okay. So?
The individual departmental fees would still apply over the month, the special event fee.
It was going to be...
So, do you have any police...
Great. Does anyone have a problem with waiving a $100 fee?
No.
Can I have a motion?
Move to waive the special event fee for the 2019 Knights of Columbus Carnival. All other department fees will apply.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Scampfield. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along.
It's not here. There's nothing coming on. I think it's just a discussion.
So, the next topic of discussion is the Memorial Day event. Don Knapp, the Veterans Day. Don, how are you?
Great. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to come from you to announce again our annual Memorial Day Observance Parade and Celebration Ceremony on the Common. As usual, we'll, it'll start off with a flotilla out of the harbor. Again, just on this event here, knowing that it's space limited, obviously if you have a boat or a vessel and you can get out on scene, that's fine, but, you know, just so the public knows that it is limited space, so. So, that'd be out of the Harbor Masters office.
What time is that, Don?
That is at 8:00. That's going to, yeah, they'll cast off around 8:00 and go out to, usually they go right out to the bellboy, weather permitting, and honor the, those lost at sea. After that, the next event would be, everyone's going to be forming up here in front of the town hall between 10:00 and 10:30 for the parade, which will have stepping off at 10:30 sharp. And it will proceed up First Parish to the Common. And then once we, you know, usually get everybody up there, we try and step off on that around 11:15, 11:10. And so, it'll be the same as every year. We'll have our guest speakers. We have the two bands, the high school band, the intermediate school band, the Girl Scouts, Brownies, and all them will be singing also. The Boy Scouts will be helping out with the Pledge of Allegiance and all that, so that should be it. We hopefully try and keep it under, you know, two hours and have great weather and get through it. It'll be a nice event.
Great. Who's the guest speaker?
So, yeah, so what we've been doing over the last year is trying to keep it under two hours. We've been just looking at our schedule and saying, we got enough speakers to kind of fill the docket. So, obviously starting right off with Bob, introducing everyone, and then we have invocation, the Boy Scouts, and then we have new, obviously we started with the ambassador of the Project 351 with the eighth grader. So, we obviously left space for that. We feel that's very important and wanting, you know, supporter, the community supporter. So, we'll have that and then obviously John will have his moment on the podium.
Who's John?
Actually, it'd be me.
Oh, Tammy.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't know that, so I'll, I'll update that, but usually, yeah, they'll go on, so that's why I had that. So, you will?
I'll keep it under an hour.
I was going to say, I think Sean might have the rec, you might want to talk to him.
I like Sean.
Just remember the Geyser Burger dish. And then obviously, like I said, the bands will perform. We'll have the, again, the other thing that we added in was the reading of the names of all the veterans that have passed since last Memorial Day with the bell. So, again, using the time on that, I think it's valuable, so that's why, again, we will do the flag ceremony and then that should be it.
Good. So, it sounds like it's very similar to the last 24 years.
Yep.
And don't rush it. It's a great event.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it usually is under two hours and hopefully the weather will work with us and we'll enjoy the day, so.
So, that's what we're hoping for. The weather looks good, not going to work, but again, if, if, and climate weather, if it's not, I mean, like crazy like we've had the last couple of days, light and sideways rain, we'll have that ceremony, get at the Gar Hall, but again, the public has to know that it's limited seating, I think it's 100 capacity in there, so.
Yep.
It's supposed to be nice.
And parking, so, yeah.
It'll be good. Any questions for Don?
Nope.
Any questions from the audience? Great, well, you don't need to vote. We'll be there and pray for good weather.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion of vote for the South River dredge contract. Howie Kruetsper, Vice Chair, Waterways Commission. Hey, Howie.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Very good.
This project's been a long time coming and we've stayed the course and it's a pleasure to report that it's cooperative effort between the state, the town of Situate, and the town of Marshfield, all working together. We have a navigational hazard in the mouth of the South River that needs to be addressed, particularly at low tide. The way this works is Mass Works Infrastructure Grant is $555,500 matched by the town of Situate, $277,500, and the town of Marshfield, $277,500. We went out to bid last fall. Unfortunately, we only had one bidder and it was much in excess of our expectations. The reason for that is this grant is available to many communities around the Commonwealth. Everyone's taken advantage of it. We're in competition with Boston as well as, in particular, Plymouth, who's doing a massive dredge job right now. So, we decided to regroup and rebid this this spring and we're pleased to say that we had three bidders this time. And the bid that you're to see before you is from Burnham Associates for $816,495. We're just, if you move forward with this bid, our plans would be to have a pre-dredge meeting, talk with the contractor to work out the logistics, as well as a public meeting to discuss with the public what it's going to mean as far as the actual construction. We tentatively see this project beginning in July, mid-July.
Oh, really?
Lasting four to six weeks. And tentatively, we're talking right now, work that happened Monday through Friday with no work on the weekends.
Okay.
The Situate Harbor Master with the Marshfield Harbor Master will assist in providing security, navigational and boating, traffic control during the process. So, there's a few things going on.
Great. Someone open up the board?
What's so unusual about this is it isn't July. It's typically in the winter, so it's going to be a challenge for those, you know, people who, you know, might be going out during the week. And, you know, we had discussed that at Waterways, you know, would, can they get around while they're working, or can they be off to the side? But it's gonna be difficult at certain tides, but it's something that has to be done. As Howie said, much needed, so.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question about access to boaters during the project, but it's just gonna be difficult.
It's a difficult area. It's very, very shallow. At a minus tide, it's, people are hitting bottom. It's very narrow, and as well as there's a very strong current there. So it's got its challenges before we even get to the boater's needs. The net-net right now is on a real negative tide. Boaters can't get into and out of the river anyway, so this will give us some relief to that.
So two other quick questions on that is, so the dredging material, what happens to that? Is it barged out, or did we end up?
Barged out.
We can't use it? And will it impact the passage on the North River at all while they're doing it?
Well...
Or how much will it impact?
It depends on how far in, you know, they'll be heading towards Trance Island. We hope not. We don't expect so.
Okay.
That's a very heavily-used area, so.
There'll be some impact when the barge is going in and out.
Right.
But the barge won't be, there'll be no work done on the weekends. I think five o'clock Friday afternoon, they have to be done and out of the way, so the weekends will be free. So there will be some disruption when that barge is going in and out, but that's not gonna be major.
What type of notification to the boaters? How we, how do we let any, I mean, I know it's probably pretty much local boaters in there, but any sort of communication that's gonna go out to them?
Well, a couple of things. We are planning on a public meeting.
A pre-meeting, yep.
To discuss that, so get that out in the open. And then, there's a notice to mariners that's published by the Coast Guard.
Okay.
And we expect we'll have a notice in there letting you know that there's a challenge.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just curious to know, where is the dredging material going? And is anyone paying for it? Seems like there's a lot of dirt and sand being moved around, and we always have to pay for what we get, but...
Unfortunately, at one point, we tried to use the spoils for beach nourishment, and that didn't work.
Yeah.
So we need to take it to the offshore site, which is about 10 miles out.
And it just...
Every time you handle it, it gets very expensive.
Yeah.
So taking it to a barge, to a truck, and then trucking it, and then taking it, it gets very, very expensive. It's just cheaper to take it.
Well, I just know that at one point, we were looking to get material from a river up in Hampshire.
Yeah.
We were gonna have to pay for it.
This is more silty material. It's really not suitable for what we're looking for.
So it's because of what the material is?
Stuff that comes out of Hampshire is a lot grainier, a lot rockier, actually.
Yeah.
So it stays, this would, it's really just silted. We go on and just wash off and put it on the beach.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So Howie, just, I'm a non-boater. Lame in terms, we're gonna put a huge barge at, across from the spit at the open of the South River.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna, there's a bunch of dirt there that boats can't get through, so you're gonna dig that dirt up and make it deeper and wider?
Exactly.
How much, how...
So well for a non-boater.
Pretty good, yeah.
So how far do you, like, what's the distance of dredging? Is it just right in that area, like a...
No.
Hundred yards, or is it...
Basically, starts where the North and South River join. It goes all the way past Trance Island, and it makes a hard left turn there, and then we'll go up what we're calling Sector A, around the next bend. That's not a very good description, but that's the best I can do without a picture.
It's far.
So you go, you go down past Roats, you're...
No, no.
No, no. You're not, oh, you're going towards the bridge?
That's correct.
Okay.
Towards the bridge way.
That's correct.
That's what I heard. Okay, cut you.
How many cubic yards, do you recall?
Eight.
I don't know.
All right, all right, okay, all right.
Well, the good thing is, the state's paying for half of it. Marshfield's paying for a quarter of it.
Yep.
And it needs to be done, so.
It really needs to be.
We're not allowing on this project, they're not doing 24-hour dredging.
Right.
That was a question, and we said, didn't think that was a road we wanted to get on, to have dredges right off people's houses in the middle of summertime.
Yeah.
They do do it on other projects, but those usually projects in the wintertime, or late in the fall when people's windows are closed, so we'll be buttoning up at night and getting out of there.
Is it optional to do it another time, or is this, is this our slot?
Uh-uh.
Is that why the quote is where it is?
Because of resources, yeah.
That's correct.
But there's only, there's only a couple of windows a year because of fish migrations and fish patents and things like that. This is a window that usually you aren't allowed to do it, but the state said, "Yeah, okay," they let us change our permit. Our permit originally was for the fall and winter dredge, but everybody else's dredging, there was, again, nobody available. The dredge bid we got before was $700,000 more than this bid.
That's why I came in...
Exact same project.
That's why I came in low, is because of the timing, so.
Right. Well, it's, it's in the middle of summer, though, it's...
They're looking for work, that's right. The Plymouth dredge is a later dredge, so.
Well, I'm glad, we're gonna take some heat for it, because we don't wanna see a barge out there, but at least it's not there on the weekends when it's busiest, and that's what you negotiated in there.
Well, it needs to get done.
Is it super loud, the actual process? Okay.
It's basically a big steam shovel that just picks it up. It's a mechanical dredge, just picks it up and...
It's not like...
...on the barge.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's like a road project. It's not...
Kids love dredgers.
It'll be cool.
Yeah.
It'll be cool. I'll probably have to take a ride out and check it out on a nice night.
We'll take you out in a boat tour.
Okay. Any questions from the audience?
It's seasick.
Any more from the board?
Nope.
You got a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract to dredge the South River to Burnham Associates of Salem, Mass. for $816,495.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Harris, for the comments. So the only thing I will make, just note, is that even though the bid is for $816,000, we're only responsible for $277,000 of it. That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, five to zero. Thanks, Howie. I think you may be here...
Another one?
For an update, right?
Sure. Double header.
Great. So the next item at 7:55 is an update on the municipal Marina pedestal project, and Howie, as the Vice Chair of Waterways, is gonna talk about that.
Yeah, this project's a significant upgrade for the patrons of Cole Parkway, as well as the Situate Marine Park Marina. It provides new pedestals, which includes electricity for the boaters, cabling, water, and lighting. So it's a comprehensive approach to it. Over the years, we've been putting on the pedestals and taking the docks out of the water during the winter, and then having to put them back on, and that creates wear and tear. We've solved that by leaving the docks in the water all year round and using de-icers to keep them such. We got an additional hit a year ago, March 2018, with a storm that really affected many of the pedestals we had. They were underwater and not usable. So it was a chance for us to upgrade this. We'll be, we've purchased, and they're on site right now, 76 new pedestals for both marinas. They've been, they've been delivered, and installation is well underway. It's not complete yet, but it's well underway. So there's a lot of activity going on. The Harbor Master and the Waterways Commission sent a email to all the patrons notifying them of the process and willing to make some concessions where we could, if anyone was negatively affected. So there's been a lot of handholding for this. We expect that the project will be done in the next few weeks, the last one being over at the Marine Park. That currently has temporary power anyway. I'll also say that Fire Chief Murphy has been very instrumental in helping us with the potential reimbursement from FEMA for the storm damage that's been done here. So there's a lot of moving parts to the project.
So as a non-boater, explain to me what a pedestal is, real quick. Is that part of the actual dock, or is the...
Yeah, it's a stanchion that goes on the dock. It's about four feet high. It allows the boaters to connect electricity to their boat. It allows them to have water. It also provides lighting for nighttime use, so there's some real benefits to these pedestals. This particular one that we're using is made from stainless steel to minimize corrosive damage.
So it doesn't actually go and support the dock in the water? It's just, it's just a utility pole on dock?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so that's, okay.
Any questions for the board?
So the docks aren't coming out of the water again?
No, they're not. They're, we've...
Did they come out this past year?
Only parts of them.
Yeah.
Came out, but our intent is with the de-icers not to take them out of the water, and we won't have to disconnect and reconnect these pedestals every year, which really creates havoc with them.
Yeah, good.
How many, Howie, when do you think it'll be completed?
I would say by the end of this week. I think most of Cole Parkway will be complete, and then they'll be working over at Situate Marine Park.
Okay.
We'd actually had a concern that the manufacturer was not gonna be able to provide these in time, so I believe we sent out a notice to the boaters that that might have occurred, but I think, as Howie said, Cole Parkway should be done this week, and the Maritime Center is on the older ones, but those will be replaced over time, so there shouldn't be a whole lot of disruption to the boaters for this project at this point.
Partly because of Howie, Harbor Master, and some other folks that kind of pushed us along, because it probably wouldn't have happened this quick, so thank you.
Yeah, I think a lot of credit has to go to Sean McCarthy. He was the bid on this, and he's the one who pushed the manufacturer to make sure that these were gonna be supplied in time to be made, so.
Great.
Sean did a lot of work on that, too, and I don't want to leave him out.
Thank you, Sean.
No, he did, and the Harbor Masters done a tremendous amount of work and coordination. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this particular project in a short amount of time with, in trying to have the least amount of disruption. I can't say thanks enough to Fire Chief Murphy for leading the charge with FEMA, because we can get us, we're anticipating a substantial reimbursement for the loss that we have that's positive. And not the least of which, I just wanna say thanks to the Waterways Commission for keeping an eye on the entire project and helping it along.
And this is a capital plan from Waterways that may be reimbursed by FEMA?
That's correct.
Right. I don't think there's a vote for it. Lorraine, is there any way you can send an email to the chief and to Sean and thank them for...
Sure.
Their help on this? Great?
Sure.
Sure.
Why not?
Howie, tell the Waterways just a thanks. Okay, we got Waterways covered.
You what?
We got Waterways covered. Howie's gonna tell them.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the update, Howie.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks for all you do.
Okay, moving right along. Eight o'clock. Item is a discussion vote for Water Resource Commission, a proposal for multi-unit building. Becky Malama, the Chair, is here to discuss this. Again, you were here...
Yes.
Month, two months ago or something?
Yeah.
And talked about this?
Yes.
So I'm gonna ask you to recap some, because Karen wasn't here for that part of the discussion, so you're probably gonna do that anyways.
Sure.
And then we'll get to our discussion.
Okay.
Do you wanna bring anyone else up?
Yeah.
Or you, you wanna introduce?
We got everybody.
You don't have to.
We've got the commission.
If you could introduce them.
Sure. Deb Rooney Smith, Martha Cook, who's a member of large, I guess, retired. (inaudible).
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 And Kevin Finney.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so, to recap. So when the rates were adjusted in the fall, they increased the water rates and also increased the connection fees, with the goal of bringing in enough money to help with capital pressure in the water department, in the water system. And we looked at, currently, a developer, yeah, a developer of a multifamily dwelling, as I always spelled out, has two options. Get one meter for your entire development, and you pay X, and then that branches off to all of the units, and then you pay one central bill. Or you can have one meter for each unit and pay for the connection fee for each meter, and then each individual unit is billed individually. Most of the developments use a master meter, which we've been trying to shift the model to one meter per unit, no matter what, because if you have a master meter, you lose the opportunities for leak detection, you lose some opportunities for water conservation. Basically, in a shared situation, you're paying for each other's water, as opposed to paying for your water use. So with the connection fee increase, I was able to look at some of the numbers and saw that it would be, looking at some of the developments that were in the hot perk, you know, if they had a master meter, how much revenue would be brought into the town? And it was about $400,000 per year. And then, if they each were required to have a single meter per unit, it was like $6 million or something like that. So if we really wanna get some adequate funding to help build a new treatment plant, things of that nature, my recommendation was to implement a one-meter-per-unit policy, also have the benefits of water conservation and leak detection. So, and I think also an equity of payment, that you're paying for your water use and not for everybody in the facilities. So when we presented that in early April, the concern from Town Council was that we couldn't actually require landlords to charge tenants for their water use. At the state level, you're allowed to do that, but there's no requirement for it. So she was concerned that if we required it, it would be stricter than the state's regulation, and therefore could be holding for litigation. So what we all kind of came up with as a solution was to allow two different options for rental properties. One being installing one meter for each unit in the building, where each occupant pays for his or her water usage, and pays directly to the water department. And then, the other being that we still would allow for a master meter, which allows for ease of billing, basically, with the water department, but you would have to pay those connection fees for each unit for the new developments, so that you would have that revenue piece. So that's what this proposal represents. It's just kind of the fleshing out of that idea. I've worked very closely with Town Council on a lot of the language, and on the, she feels that this alleviates her concerns about that requirement for landlords charging tenants. She does have a concern, which a number of towns have mentioned, we spoke to a number of other towns, that administratively, it could get kind of dicey if you've got a new 200-unit development that comes in. All of a sudden, the water department now has 200 new bills that they have to process and follow up on and manage, versus if it was a master meter, it's just one bill, or maybe five or 10 bills. I continue to ask Sean Anderson, the water superintendent, and his staff, and share these concerns with them, and they, every time, very succinctly say, "No, we can handle it. We can absolutely handle it." They very much are in favor of the one-meter-per-unit policy. And the other concern that Town Council had was just the fact that there is the kind of this option, it kind of treats rental properties different than any other property, but she sees that it does address the bigger concern, which is that we can't require a landlord to charge a tenant. So I just wanted to share her concerns, so.
Good. So just a quick overview. We're the water and sewer commissioners, so we set all the policy and rates for the town. They're our advisory committee, and they've come and spoken about this. One other concern that popped up was 40Bs, whether this would be administrable against a 40B. I think there was a lot of discussion from Jim that thought that a 40B would not have to adhere to this. There's not a ton of 40Bs in town, and hopefully, at some point, we'll hit that threshold, so they won't have any more.
Right.
But one thing that you brought up, and I think your commission obviously is into water resources and really trying to limit the use and have good use of the water, is the fact that when you have individual billing, you allow the individual to maintain their own water supply, so that they, if they really wanna keep their bill low and conserve water, that they actually have the ability to do that. And that attracted me, that it's, this is my water bill, and I have control over it, as opposed to having to pay for one-tenth of whatever my neighbor uses. So that was an interesting thought that I hadn't thought of before. So let me open up to the board for discussion, and we'll go from there.
Sure. I'll go. I wasn't here for the meeting, but I watched, I watched it on tape. I also did some research last night with regards to Cohasset and Norwell, and I'm curious why. I personally think $14,000 per connection for a multi-unit is really excessive, but I agree with metering them individually and holding them accountable, because it'll help with conservation and make people more aware. So in some other towns, what I have seen, and I'm curious, as you did your research, why you didn't go down this route, is that there are different connection fees associated with the different-sized pipe. And if I'm reading all their policies properly, I'm not a water person, but for me, that would make more sense to increase the connection fees for the size of the connection, and also do the individual meters, 'cause I think, I don't know how they would pass on that $14,000 per unit, and, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna run down to the rental fee, right, eventually?
Right.
So that's one concern that I have with regards to that. And secondly, the way this is written, it's just, it says rental property. What about multi-units that are condos and owned? So I didn't see that addressed here either.
Then they would, that first piece would apply to any, the initial language from April was an owner-occupied building, so that would fall under that first piece. That the concern about landlords charging tenants directly for water strictly in a rental situation, not in an ownership situation.
Not in owner. Okay. So I guess in my first question, yeah, did you look at the multi-size connection pipe variable rates?
And that's how we currently do it as a town, so you pay more based on the size of, you know, the pipe. It's pretty insignificant what the increase is. I mean, to be quite honest, I didn't really look at, because the $14,000 connection, $14,000 connection fee had just been voted on in November, I was really just trying to make sense of that number. So no, I didn't really look at adjusting the number. I did speak with Town Council a little bit about it, and my point to her was that if we were to just adjust the connection fee and still allow master meters in order to get an increase in revenue, it doesn't take care of what we consider the bigger issues, which are water conservation, leak detection. So the goal here is really getting the one meter per unit, and I, my assumption was just that the $14,000 was what I had to work with, because that was what was voted on in the fall.
But that's not how we do it today, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
We voted that increase.
No, I know it's $14,000 per connection, but do we apply that to a developer today?
Yeah, as of September, October, November, whenever that was.
So, so...
But I think Moore's question is if they have, if they want one meter on a multi-unit property, they would be charged for six units?
No, they would be charged, depending on how many meters they implement. So they can still have a master meter currently.
Right, so right now, they do a master...
So you would pay $14,000 plus the size of the pipe, right? So it's like, I think it's a $100 to maybe $800 difference for the larger pipes.
Kevin, do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Yeah.
So it would be, to your point, if someone's having 10 units, it's going to be $140,000 instead of a $14,000.
But I mean, their impact on the water system, right, whether you're living in a condo or not, you know, as a, if I'm going to build my own home, a single-family home, I'd have to pay the $14,000. And if my neighbor was going to build their home, they have to pay the $14,000. So just because, I feel that there's an equity piece there, that everybody with a new building or new development should have to pay for that connection fee. While it is a lot, I think in the grand scheme of passing the fee on, that it would be doable. But I haven't heard any feedback. I had asked if they'd been getting some pushback on the increase in the connection fee.
But is it $14,000 per unit?
Yes, and it's a one-time.
Not now.
So if you're occupying a one-bedroom, you've got a one-bedroom...
You would, so the property owner, at the time, built it.
The builder would pay it?
Yes, the builder would pay it.
And potentially pass it on in the way?
Yeah.
I would imagine.
And then the tenant still has to pay the water bill now?
Yes, yes.
Which most tenants are not used to paying water bills, in my experience.
But it kind of is just a time...
And I understand why you're considering it. I'm just saying that most tenants...
So their rent, in theory, would be lower in this situation, and he would pay, or not, because of the way the connection fee, yeah. But I feel like $14,000 would filter down relatively quickly. But I don't know that. And I will say that most towns, there's only one other town in Massachusetts that we've been able to find that requires this, the town of Groton. Well, Cohasset does require it on paper. They actually use this, they do exactly what I've outlined here with their larger rental properties, like with Avalon, that's what they've done, this, they've allowed for the, for the master meter in those circumstances. But most of the towns, $14,000 is a high connection fee. So most of the towns, like Groton, I think it's $4,000. Cohasset is similar, so.
$4,000?
Yeah.
Karen, you could?
Yeah. I have, I have a bunch of questions. I know how much work has gone into this, and I really appreciate the work of the whole commission on this. One of the questions I had was the other community's question. So if we do, so we have one of the highest connection rates now, and only one other community in Massachusetts does this per unit. So we will put ourselves at the very top of new development costs for water. So you said the water department was fine with the mechanics and all of this. Have, have we had...
I wouldn't actually say that, though, not to interrupt you, I'm sorry. I don't, maybe there's one piece of new costs for water, so there might be other fees that other towns are charging in other arenas around it, that's okay necessarily.
It is as proposed right now, which is, you know, we may want to do for other reasons, too, you know, because we need to think about our plans. So that brings me to the input of planning and development people in this building. I think that we need to tap into their, I don't know if you've already had a chance to talk with them.
Mm-mm.
I think that's a really critical point, because they have a different lens on this, on how this will impact either proposed developments, or just the practicality of, you know, forget the conservation piece of it, but the development piece and the application as a business, as an economic development impact. So I would like to see, take the plan, now that, you know, it's all fleshed out, and have that conversation with the planning, director of planning and development, and, you know, perhaps some of the planning folks or the EDC folks.
So it did, I did, I have Brad Washburn reach out to me the other day.
Oh, good.
I sent him an outline of the proposal, asked him to call with any additional questions or thoughts, and haven't heard anything, but I'm happy to have a separate meeting with him.
I think that's a really critical piece. And then the other concern that, and I've been involved in a lot of these conversations, I think the work's been, you know, great, headed in the right direction. One thing I hadn't really thought about until, you know, now, anything like a deadline to make you think about stuff, right, is, and this is the same sort of thing, applying the different lens, is the impact on our affordable housing goals. You've listed the loss and green on here, but that is certainly, we don't want to, it's not good for our master plan that we're developing, but our master plans, to discourage appropriate affordable housing, or to make it not, you know, price them out of it, basically. So I'm a little concerned about, you know, if we all of a sudden say, "Okay, here, you know, housing authority, we want to do this, and you're going to have to spend another million dollars on it," is that even gonna, are we going to price them out of providing more homes?
Okay. So I can reach out to them as well?
Makes sense. Your emeritus has a...
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about, we did talk...
Martha, just a minute.
Hi, Martha. From an affordable housing authority, if I were today, living into a situation like that, it would be more fair for me, in the long run, to pay for my own personal water usage at the individual rate, as opposed to paying my portion of the water usage of the entire development at the higher rate for a more aggregate? Because, as you know, we go up by usage, and so if I'm in a 20-unit development, I'm going to pay a higher 20 rate, whereas if I am in a 40Bs, I want to pay my own water usage, not everybody's.
Yeah, I totally get that piece. It's the connection, it's the connection fees. And so if somebody's building a 20-unit, and we're going to charge them 20 times 14 to build the building?
Right. So upfront, that's the developer. In the long run, it's gash tenants.
Yeah. So that's the piece that I just, I'm a little concerned that maybe, you know, just like Ms. Curran said about, you know, if we look at some other examples of, you know, we've got a huge pipe, and, you know, different pricing models, that we might want to layer in. I just personally don't think it's a good idea to discourage affordable housing, appropriate affordable housing. And I say that very, A, capital A, appropriate, because we need it.
Yeah. I hear that. And in terms of the tiered rate, I think we would need to just scrap this. We'd have to do a whole other rate study.
Well, I think...
I imagine, because that decision was made by the board to increase the connection fee, is to decrease the, to decrease the proposed increase for rates across the board. So I think we'd have to go back, or maybe Nancy and I could look at what, because the rate study did not cover this. I spoke with them about this.
Right, right.
So I think what we should do is, is have, you know, Kevin and Sean come back, because you guys proposed the rate of $14,000. And I, it made a lot of sense then, and I don't know in the context of this as it does, or that I just don't know why we went up that high. But the one, the one thing to Martha's point was, it's really just timing of the payment, right? Because at the lowest water rate, we're under $2 a hundred cubic feet. And when you get up to the next level, you're at like $7 or $8. So the one meter is going to pay it over time, whereas the individual meters are going to pay it upfront. And it's going to be paid by the developer. And clearly, the town has a need for money to put in the infrastructure. And I think we thought that the, if I remember correctly, that the developers should participate more than the, than the actual renter initially, because we need the money upfront.
Right, but maybe we need to do a combination. If we're going to go to individual, maybe we need to revisit the connection.
And did we say that the 40Bs probably won't have to pay this?
Yeah, what was...
That's what Jim's thought was.
So if that's the case, then it's, it falls more on any development that's not...
If you're building a 40B apartment complex, that's going to be a large project in the 200-unit range.
Right, which we have one.
So 200 units times $14,000, they're going to go immediately to the state and say, "That requirement makes it unaffordable. We can't do affordable housing with that requirement." Whether the state buys it or not, I'm going to tell you, the Housing Appeals Committee will buy it, because they'll buy anything. They just say, "No, it's affordable housing. You can, you can do whatever you want." But to Karen's point, Karen Campfield's point, this is a policy, so if someone came in with a proposal to do actual, real affordable housing, then the board sitting as water commissioners could make an adjustment to what they were paying, in the interest of providing affordable housing. But on a 40B charter, if I told you, "You're going to pay me $14,000 for 200 units,"
Suit yourself.
"Write to the state and say, 'Unaffordable, makes it uneconomic, we can't build.'" And fairly certain, the Housing Appeals Committee will say, "Yes, that's unaffordable, uneconomic, and don't out."
And you were talking about different-sized piping. I just, this, Kevin, this 5/8 to 3/4, there's not a lot of different-sized...
The other towns go all the way up to like 6-inch, they have some big...
This is $4,526, Nancy just took a quick map, because she's amazing. And 5/8 is $296, the 3/4 is $360,400, and 8 is $460.
How many do you, do we see?
But that's on top of the $14,000?
That's the base charge annually.
Annually?
Quarter of that each.
$300?
Yeah, but if you look, you know what I would love to do, is take a look at this collectively, like you said. Because I think there are a lot of moving parts that we're really not all considering right now. I'm very much in favor of putting individual meters. I think that's your ultimate goal. What I would like to do is look at it all together with Sean, and Kevin, and Nancy, and take a look at what other towns do, because there is some pretty significant connection fees for those larger pipes. They're like $100,000. And then they're individual, or whatever you call mass metering, is what we call it, the second one.
So you're saying, having a master meter, but requiring that there are sub-meters beyond those master meters? So basically, the town, that master meter, that larger pipe, would be managed by the town, and then they would sub-meter the units? Because the mass, the larger meter, no, it's the larger pipe into the development.
It's the pipe, not the meter, right?
I believe that they're tied.
Like Cohasset has a 12-inch pipe, and they pay $100,000.
Right.
We don't have any developments, and I don't think Cohasset does really, where they have a 12-inch pipe going into the, I mean, they just...
Maybe Avalon.
I mean, that's our main carrying line, 12-inch, like Hadley Road, one of our big carrying lines is only a 12-inch pipe. So we don't have any subdivisions where we put a 12-inch pipe, it'd be coming off an 8-inch, and we would supply the water for that.
Okay.
So if that makes sense. So most of the connections that we have are much smaller, and it might be like a 4-inch connection, or even a 6-inch connection, and it won't for the fire. There might be a fire connection or something to that effect.
Kevin, do you recall the rationale for the $14,000?
I kind of do. And I'll check with Nancy, too. I'll pick her brain on it. I thought we gave the board three options on how we could do it, and we were suggesting a higher rate. And I thought the board was suggesting, maybe not the board, maybe we were looking at doing higher new tie-in fees in a lesser rate, in order to get where we needed to balance the budget.
And it was actually brought up at that meeting, when that was decided, thinking, "Okay, putting some," burden isn't the right word, but having some of the newer developments pay for the work that needs to be done, the infrastructure. And the comment was actually made at that meeting, "Should we revisit the fact that we allow a master meter?" And then the comment was made, "We'll run the numbers." And then when I ran the run numbers, it was such a big difference, that if we were increasing the connection fees to help pay for future work that needed to happen, we wouldn't get that money if we still allowed the master meters, basically. So that's where this started.
One second, Nancy. Nancy, I'm sure there's paperwork that we got at that meeting. Is there any way you can pull that together and kind of throw the proposal of going individual metering into it, and see if that numbers...
You want me to run numbers?
Yeah.
Oh, you sweet tough.
You're making us so happy.
So in terms of how that would then fit with the goals, basically?
I think, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we like the policy of the individual metering.
Right.
But we need to see if it coincides with the rate increase that we did for the metering, for the hook-up. So I think that we've got to come to grips that we're not overcharging people, that's going to, you know, make it unaffordable, make people not want to develop here, and the whole, the whole plan together. I'm going to go to the woman in the white first.
It seems that everybody's kind of hung up on the 40B, or as one of the things, as $14,000 is being, making it, you know, the cost of, what if it's just a percentage of that development? If they're saying there's going to be five 40B units, and then those are the five that maybe we need to respond to, that everybody else in this town is going to pay $14,000 to hook up the water. So why do, does the whole development get the benefit of just because there's a couple of units in the middle of 40B?
Yeah. I think, I don't know that we're hung up on the 40B, because I think we all agree that we have no control over 40B.
Yeah.
So, so I think we have to look outside of it, like you're suggesting, saying, "Look, this is for the regular development that goes on in town." If this one big 40B goes into place, then maybe the last 40B that goes into place, too. So, so I think it's, that's short-lived. But I think...
And if it doesn't apply per unit, that applies to the whole development in any way.
Really, it would be up to the, to the housing authority to decide what, what they would charge them, I think, right, Jim? I mean, they would deem it unaffordable, and we wouldn't get paid. Pam?
Yes, Erin Wolfman. This whole discussion is taking, to me, it seems like there's an infinite amount of sewer, wastewater capacity as well as water in this town, which we know there is not. So I'd like to know, where is the town right now on sewer capacity?
Where are we right now? At this very second, with all the rain, we're somewhere around 98%.
How many people can hook up right now?
With all the developments that are in queue.
Correct. You're at 98% right now.
With all the water that we've had, over the last...
No, I'm talking about how many people can hook up the sewer right now?
Only the projects that we have in place, and maybe a few other little ones.
Is there a moratorium?
Not yet.
Will it be after that?
Could be. We'll discuss it in the future.
There used to be a moratorium. What, where did the excess come in?
It was never a moratorium since I've been here.
It was in 90...
You were way back in the 90-something.
Actually, in the early 2000s, when they expanded the system, there was a moratorium.
1996, we spent $15 million on the treatment plant.
Correct, and it was undersized at that time.
Well, no, but we, no, we increased it to lift the moratorium, because DEP said...
Right. But when they went to open it, they realized, again, it was undersized. So my question is, how many more people can hook up to town sewer? Rough estimate, how many more households?
Very few, until we get I&amp;I done, and until we see what, it's kind of unfair to look at it right now, because the water, it's rained so much lately, that we're processing a heck of a lot more water in the, in the time period that we're looking at right now. But it is still very, very high, and it's obviously an issue that the board's got to discuss. So your, your big picture is very correct. Kevin, do you have anything out of that, or? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My math doesn't that quick, I can't really, you can't answer that.
So there aren't going to be a ton of new projects being approved in the situation? They don't want to tie into the system, the private system, is that correct?
We're going to be discussing that in the upcoming weeks, but we are, we are close to a level of, it's, it's high on the priority list of us to figure out.
I think our main, you know, just kind of at the top of our head, was all of the development on having the toll brothers. And, you know, all this extra, and to make sure that each, there's like four units together on the campus, each person would be responsible for a meter. And I think there was some confusion that that wasn't going to happen.
Well, toll brothers is done, and we've already worked out them there. I don't know if they're doing interval meeting, but I know that they paid for all of the hookups.
Okay, so that's already...
It's already done. And we're, we're trying to set policy for the future, you know, it's, that's all.
Can I ask, what did they pay for the jobs?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. I think it was abated a little bit, but a fair amount per unit, millions, a million-four or something?
What did it come down to, individual unit?
I'd be guessing. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Are we talking about their water hookups, or sewer? No, sorry, I don't know. I thought you were talking about... What was your water hookup? It would have come in under our previous rates.
$4,500 per unit.
And they were $4.
They were not.
Four years ago, I paid $6,500 for a meter, and $15,000 to hook up the sewer. How wonderful towns come down.
No, no, the price didn't go down. I don't, the rates ever go down.
Would have been whatever the rate was at the time.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board? From what I'm hearing, we're not going to vote on this tonight.
It doesn't seem like it.
And it seems like, conceptually, we like the idea and the direction it's moving in. It seems like financially, we need to look at the modeling and see if it's not really going hand-in-hand with the rate increases that we just proved a few months ago.
Right, and I guess just my only response to that was that I provided a bunch of numbers back in April, that showed that if the goal, and again, I don't know how it'll work into the model, but Nancy looked at the numbers that I provided, as did Kevin at the time, and it just showed that you're only going to get 300 from those four, from some of the bigger developments, you're only going to get $400,000 per year in revenue. So your goal, I think, was millions of dollars in projects that the water department needed to complete, that they were trying to cover with the increased rate. So, you know, I could share that again, and see how it all fits together.
So maybe what we'll do is, why don't we set up a meeting not outside of here? We'll pick two board members to meet with you, and Nancy, and maybe Sean, or Kevin, whoever wants to, and kind of go through the whole conceptual thing, and then, then they can update the board on it, so we don't have to start at page zero here, and then we'll come back and discuss it at a future meeting. That sound good, everybody?
I'd like to include Brad in that conversation.
Yeah, and I'll have a separate meeting with Brad as well.
Well, yeah, but if we have a sort of think tank on it, I think he's a very important...
So why don't we put closure to this? Who wants to do that, so I can pass that on to somebody else? Who wants to, Karen?
Well, I've been involved in the conversation, happy to continue.
All right, so why don't the two Karens get together and set up the meeting?
It's going to get confusing.
All right. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Moving on to the next topic. It's a discussion of vote for sewer tie-in.
Speaking of...
And this is for Bittersweet Lane and Long Meadow Road, Leo Costello and Paul Maravito.
I think you want a copy of the math that Paul Maravito's office dropped off, and you're, I'm happy to have it. I just thought it'd be easier to look at it on the screen.
Perfect. And I assume everyone saw in the packet that we got the information from sewer department on the, I asked him to just run the current numbers, so that we knew exactly what we were dealing with, with all the projects in the right now.
Is there a version?
Just your names.
Just my, my down with, or is it that one? Is there a version of the exhibit that the audience exists?
Which exhibit?
The one that has the math.
The math?
One of mine.
Take my...
No, it's mine. All right.
And we'll hold it up, so that you can watch it again.
Let me check for questions.
I am talking to Adam Lee.
Adam Lee.
Karen, you and I can share.
36 and 1.
36 and 1.
So, so before I turn it over, let me give a quick summary of where we are on, on... So, so before I turn it over, let me give a quick summary of where we are on, on the whole topic. So we had a meeting last week, our last meeting, actually, we've had meetings for the couple, the past couple of months, where the wastewater treatment enterprise fund is financially challenged, we'll say, and we need to generate revenue to do, pay for the infrastructure and to pay for the operations of the enterprise fund. And part of our plan is for new development and the hookup fees to participate in that. And also, part of the plan is to let other people hook up to the infrastructure that already exists, because there's no additional expense for that, but you get the revenue of the hookups. And that's got to be part of our ongoing plan, our annual plan, that there's different components of it that allow the enterprise fund to be a break-even operation, so that we don't have to keep raising the rates every year. That being said, we had probably our first meeting, last meeting, where we talked about two different developments, or not two different developments, one single homeowner, and then one project that had been essentially given a hookup back in the 90s, when it became available to them, and they came before us for a hookup too. And we granted the one hookup, and then 10 hookups on, I can't remember if they were in the street.
Persimmon and Hickory.
Persimmon. Right, Hickory. And that, we said at that meeting, that that's going to prompt other people to come before us and look for hookups as well.
And here they are.
Leo's been before us before, a year ago maybe, to talk about his project, and we expect to see others coming in. Since that time, we've gotten some additional numbers from Will Brandon, which have all the other projects that are already in queue, that already have permits to build, and what that has done to our capacity. So that's the additional information that we have here. So we really have some tough decisions moving forward on two fronts. One, to keep the enterprise fund financially secure, and two, being attentive to our sewer capacity and not getting into a position where we're overextended it. So that's what we have to talk about, and that's, this is, that's going to be a much bigger discussion than tonight, but Leo's before us to talk about the hookups that he's talking about, and we'll discuss them individually and see where they fall. That being said, anyone want to say anything before I turn it over to Paul? Was that a fairly good summary of?
There it is.
Well, I just might add that Leo's been bef, like you said, he's been before us in different reasons. Well, most of the time, it was a capacity issue, let's see what happens with North Situate. So he's been before us half a dozen times. If not, he'd get ready to come, and then not come, because Kevin would tell him, well, we're waiting to see what's going on with North Situate with the regional project. So he's been back and forth, and then we saw the other group come in, fine, tie them in, I voted for it. But, you know, this is like 50, 70-year-old development that, I think we all agree, would like to see those people that have been in town for years and years, then if we have to get, then if we're near our capacity, it's just like all the new ones seem to jump in, and that's it.
So, Will, I'm going to let them talk before you, unless I misspoke. Okay. All right. So Paul or Leo, whoever wants to pitch what you're asking for here, and then we'll get Will involved in the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The sketch that I prepared for the members, it shows a total of 14 homes that would be tied into the sewer. Leo is proposing to connect to the existing forest main and Anvinal Road, and run it down the full length of a Bittersweet Drive, which would service 10 homes, and extend it onto his property, which is off of Long Meadow Road. There'd be four dwellings on his property, which would be tied in. Leo would, on Bittersweet Drive, he would bring these sewer stubs to the property line to make it easy for the homeowners to tie into their home by working out their lots only, without having to go into the street. He would repave the street as necessary. And number nine, Long Meadow, which is a house that's under construction, would be tied in probably sooner than later. By doing this, the town would have an infrastructure installed for 14 homes that would ultimately be on the sewer. There'd be no cost to the town, and the revenue that you get would be from the sewer connection fees, and again, there'd be no cost to the town. We do have a letter that I'll present to you from one of the abudders, Maureen Hurley, who's in support of it. Bittersweet Drive was built in the 50s and 60s. Those systems are old, the soils aren't that great out there, so anyone selling their home is probably going to be looking at having to put in a very expensive septic system. It would be beneficial if the sewer was in, and they could accommodate the house in that manner. So I think with that, I'll end and answer any questions you may have.
Is there any, is there any reason outside of it would be better, it'd be nice to have a sewer in this neighborhood, that they should get it? Is there any perking issue? Is there any, is there anything other than-
Yes. We did the subdivision on the other side of Anvinal Road, and this is in the watershed to the Dolan Wellfields, which I believe the town is testing. The town purchased those wellfields back in the 80s, I believe, and I think they're looking to bring those online. When we did the Curtis Farm subdivision last year, they suggested that we look at tying that into the sewer, because of the Dolan Wellfields, which were about 1,300 feet downhill. From an environmental point of view, this would be a, I believe this would be a benefit to the groundwater supplies that would perhaps feed those wellfields. The other reason is that you wouldn't have these unsightly mounds. The groundwater is very high out here, and there'd be some pretty high mounds in those streets. We have done septic systems in this area as repairs, and they all ended up with mounds.
It's a close down to a squashed pond, too, which the state needed to clean it, too.
Yeah. Can you just speak up, because the people on the back end here?
Go ahead, Leo.
I was just saying that I believe that that flows down to a squashed pond also, which I believe was part of the reason the state had them come in and connect down there to keep that squashed pond.
Ma'am, I'll get you more, one second. All right, let me open up to the board. Who wants to, anyone want to start the discussions?
I will.
Karen?
I just would like to know, from a general standpoint, how many of neighborhoods that have sewer running by them could use the same logic? We're at capacity, close to it, and I understand why everyone wants sewer, and I appreciate that. If we didn't have a capacity problem, I'd be saying, let's hook everyone up that we can. But, you know, because there's a connection running down Anvinal, how many other, you know, neighborhoods would have a similar case to make all over town? So that's my only concern, and I'm new to this, so...
I mean, at this point in time, Leo's plan would be to install the entire infrastructure. He's already had R.F. Mahoney do a design on that, and it does work, and what he would do immediately is to tie one house in on his property. We don't know how many would, I'll be tying in on Bittersweet Drive, but again, that'll be subject to the capacity. The point is that the infrastructure would be in place when the capacity is available. If people wanted to tie in, they could do it, at no expense to the town.
So, in other words, you're not asking to tie in, you're just asking to put the infrastructure in?
As of today, we're asking to put the infrastructure in-
Right.
And tie in number nine, Long Meadow, which is a new home under construction on Leo's property.
So you're proposing to put infrastructure in through a whole neighborhood, but only tie in one house?
One house at this time.
At this time.
And break up the cul-de-sac.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
May I ask, is that house under construction?
Actually, I'll get, I'll get to all you guys, you'll be able to talk shortly. Is that, oh yeah? Anyone else?
I'll go later. You want to go?
You go.
Okay. Just, I, just because I don't remember, on the other side of Hathaway, there's a, the new development as well, the school?
Curtis.
Curtis, the Curtis Development. Is that, did that get sewed, or they had that?
No, that's-
They had to build that joint project?
That's on a shared system.
A shared system, right.
That's one big leachery area for all the homes.
So they're actually in the same situation on that side, where it's, it's running on the road. So if Leo's property were on Anvinal, he'd hook up, no problem. And if we add this whole line to number nine, anyone along that line would have, would then have frontage, and that would make them eligible. You couldn't not let them hook up, because that's the policy. If it runs in front of your house, you can hook up, right?
Well, we're the-
Well-
We're the commissioners, so we could not.
We couldn't tell anybody on Anvinal they couldn't hook up, if they weren't, if somebody, technically-
There were stubs along that whole line from the school up, and-
If somebody were on septic and hadn't hooked up yet?
Well, uh-
They would have by right, as long as it wasn't a moratorium. Am I, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. Okay. Sorry?
There's a stub at the end of Bittersweet Lane, correct?
Yes.
On Anvinal.
Yes, there's two homes on the corner of Bittersweet and Anvinal. The assessors' map, if you look at the, if you're looking down Bittersweet Drive from Anvinal, that house on the left there, that's actually been divided, there's a second house there, and those two houses are tied into that sewer.
Okay.
Number 20, sorry, number 42, Bitters, no, 42 Anvinal Road, and there's a new house behind it that was tied in as well.
And that ran behind the backyard or something like that to get to, all right?
Who's hooked up?
Is that the one?
The frontage was-
Yeah, that one's hooked up. And it's, it went-
This one's hooked up already?
It has front- That's my house, it has front-
And who's number three? Is that Leo, do you own that as well?
Paul?
Yes.
Which one's hooked up? This one on the left of the street, this one, or this one?
No, the first one you showed.
This one?
Yeah, and you see the lots, 46,000 square feet?
Mm-hmm.
That lot was actually subdivided, and they created another lot behind it off of Bittersweet Drive, and that house is tied in.
There's a house behind this one?
Yes.
And they're both hooked up?
Yes.
You're the one behind it?
On Bittersweet.
But it has frontage on Anvinal.
The first one does.
Both of them do.
Oh, they're both-
They both have Anvinal frontage.
Oh, because the lot-
Well, when were they subdivided?
It's a-
To land, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a stub in the middle of Bittersweet?
Yes.
That's why we did it.
Yes.
To tie in all the houses from the school to the four-way intersection. And the line's designed to handle every house along the way. Not new houses, but every existing house at that time.
Where? This way or this?
The Anvinal Road.
From the school up to the four-way.
Yeah.
Every house along the way.
Sean, you're right, when we did the design for the Hathaway School to tie it in-
Yeah.
We were asked by the town administrator to provide stubs along that line for the individual homes, as well as Bittersweet Drive.
Because the board told Agnew to do that.
And there's a separate forest main that came in the Bittersweet Drive off of Anvinal Road.
Thank you.
Intent was to do what we're looking at now.
Right. When Hathaway School was tied in, there's a line, whether it's forced or gravity, from the school up to the four-way intersection.
Four-way intersection.
Captain, Captain P.S. Tilden, the four-way stub. Right. So the board instructed Rick Agnew to put stubs for every house between the school and the four-way intersection.
Along Anvinal.
That's correct. That's correct.
Sean, are there any in Bittersweet stubs?
There's one right in the middle, and that was, that's what I just asked Paul, one in the middle, to handle that street.
Right, there's one in the, not on Bittersweet, but on Anvinal.
Paul said there is, that's what I told him.
Down Bittersweet.
It's on Anvinal, pointing towards Bittersweet.
Yes.
Yeah.
It does go down Bittersweet a short distance.
And that was our intention at that time.
Yeah.
Why put the line in and not put the stubs in?
Look, I think, I think that the elephant in the room is the capacity. It's not the fact whether the development, you know, could use a hookup, and that it would be a good deal for the town to get all the infrastructure done for one house in the back. The problem is the, the capacity of the system right now.
But I also would like clarity, it was my first understanding that all these homes were going to come on, and now we're hearing one.
Well, Karen's point was, if you put the, if you put the line in there, then they now have the right-
Automatically can, right.
Well, I don't know.
But doesn't say they're going to.
That is.
But they can.
So if we put an extension off a one, off a main, then people have the right to hook up?
Typically, yes. We have, we have two scenarios, so we've got some scenarios in town, where there is a forest main that goes down the road, but there are no stubs to the houses. That's, we classify that as not necessarily a right to tie in, because you couldn't tie in for a forest main like that, as well. But if there are, is a forest main with stubs and everything else broken in, I anticipate.
Sean, did you have anything else?
And this would be a forest main, obviously. Wouldn't be gravity.
Be an E1 system, it'd be pump system the whole way, I believe. And that's, Leo, is that what you- Yes. You would have, you'd have land pump systems? Yes.
Want me to come back to you?
Yeah, no, I'm all set for it right now, thank you.
I'm good, I'd like to hear from other folks that want to speak.
Okay.
I'm good with Will.
So, before we get to you, Will, can you just give us an overview of your memo here about the capacity of the system, and what impact this will have, and your opinion, and all that?
The key takeaways are, is that we're currently at 93.9% of our state wastewater plant. Factoring in all the developers and previously approved projects, those that have permits that have been otherwise approved by planning board, factoring that in, we'd be down to 98.8% of our capacity, meaning there's less than 2% remaining after community capacity is taken into effect. The other thing I wanted to note was that because a lot of our flow is from INI, we're very much at the limbs of mother nature, and our capacity numbers month to month can change as much as nearly 8%. So that's very concerning to me, for month to month, I'm kind of biting my nails until those numbers come out.
So what, what's-
It's flowing-
Okay, yeah.
I understand.
Sir, sir, just one second. Let him finish, and I'll let you-
He's just jarring himself.
Yeah. So, so Will, go ahead, continue.
That's it for the key takeaways, I can dive into it with specific breakdowns.
Can you elaborate on what you just said? You're waiting for that to go down, meaning that when the summer comes, what do you mean by that?
Each, each month, I have to calculate our capacity from the previous month and factor it into our rolling average, and if we exceed that rolling average, it's a lot of headaches and a lot of consequences for us. So pretty much since September of last year, September 2018, when the rainfall in the fall was getting heavier and heavier each week in each month, we started to become very concerned because when we would normally hope for a little bit of drop-off in our flows, we were not receiving any drop-off. Instead, we were receiving some of the highest flows that we've seen to date, particularly in November of 2018. In the report, you'll see that the, the greatest monthly change within the previous three years, that seven point, rounding seven point nine percent change from one month to another month, occurred in November of 2018.
So again, you said you had expected it to go down.
I had hoped it would go down. I'm still hoping it's going to go down, but April this year was slightly higher flows than April last year. I'd like to hope that as temperatures rise, things will dry up, but I'm also concerned that as temperatures rise, more evaporation's going to occur and it's becoming more difficult to predict rain patterns and rainstorm for us.
Any questions for Will?
Well, just one comment that this, your work is always very thorough, but the ninety-eight point eight doesn't, it, it assumes everything's online, but doesn't assume we've finished some of the I and I projects.
It takes into account no I and I projects elsewhere.
Okay. So, you know, we are working at the same time to make sure that that gets, that number doesn't, we don't hit that number.
Anything else before I open up?
All right.
Okay, I'll open up to the audience. Did you get your terms taken care of? I and I is the holes in the system that we're trying to plug?
The idea is it's not actually sewer discharge, it's just water getting into pipes.
Exactly.
Ocean and groundwater getting into the holes and we've estimated it's about a third of the stuff that we process is not sewage.
Thanks.
Right, so if we could close that up, no problem.
Okay, so...
What's your name?
My name's Adam Wade and I'm at thirty-six An Vinil in quarter of Bittersweet. I've lived in the house for about ten years now. Got to know folks in the neighborhood and I have some questions, just made aware of this by my neighbors. And they, they really relate to how this proposal fits into a plan generally for the neighborhood. Now primarily my concern is that Bittersweet remains a cul-de-sac. That this is not the thin edge, a thin edge of the wedge that is going to be a force stretch towards further development and having to fit it into that.
Sorry.
I've got two little girls, eleven and nine, and this is their neighborhood and they're kind of growing up the way I did. You just turn them in from the backyard and down, down the cul-de-sac they go. I'd, I'd be concerned if there was increased traffic for development on the cul-de-sac or to cease to be a cul-de-sac, so I do have...
So stop right there.
Connect it to...
What, what's going on? Are you putting a street, are you extending the street into that?
No.
I've broken out the lots and I've given them to my children.
Right.
So...
And how do they access, how do they access the, I, one minute, sorry. How do they access those lots, Leo?
Long Meadow Road. I put in a common driveway for two lots and I'm going to break another lot off the cul-de-sac to give to them. So each son gets to see the question.
Do you own the land on the cul-de-sac?
I bought the cul-de-sac, but it is a wetland.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Long Meadow, not, not Bittersweet.
No, I bought Bittersweet.
Oh, you do? All right, okay. I thought...
So therefore is...
Oh, yes, right.
You've got all this land back here. You're going to open this up and all of a sudden this is going to be the street that goes back to you.
That's all, wetland in there. The other thing is that there was a subdivision plan where Fieldstone Road went all the way in from Long Meadow up to the end of Bittersweet Drive. There's a series of lots in there. Leo's wiped those out and created two large lots for two reasons. Number one, there was the amount of wetland which you wouldn't be able to build on, but also the town has a drain easement for a large drain pipe that comes, that picks up the water at the end of Bittersweet Drive and it actually comes across his property and ties into Fieldstone Road. But again, number three and number nine are two large lots and what he did was to get rid of, I think, eight or nine lots that were on a plan created in the nineteen sixties. Those, those lots couldn't be built on today anyway because of the wetland, so what he did was to get rid of those and he created lot three and nine and they're serviced by a common driveway off of Long Meadow Road.
Okay.
Sean, one second. I think they're concerns and I was wondering what they were and I can't speak...
Bittersweet Drive would never be extended for a couple of reasons. One, because of the grade change and the other is because of the wetlands that are in there.
And if I can, I've talked to Leo about this for a long time and I may be going out on a limb here, but you would never, ever consider putting that a throughway. And I, that, he's got...
I, I have bought it, but I don't, and you could answer this better than me. I don't think I own enough property on the cul-de-sac to bring a road through there. It touches it, but it's not, it's not sixty feet wide or anything that touches it.
Right, and I think that, that's it. Well, it's his concern and I didn't even think about that. I, I did never even consider it all, all the time we were talking. I, you know, you've got, and, and, and your children might have different ideas, but you've got, you know, beautiful parcel there. If you run something through it, it's just, it's devalue the whole. I didn't think that was his intention.
So I have printout from Google Maps, which I understand if you turn off the satellite, follows town parcel maps.
Okay.
As of, who knows when they last did it, but it looks different. It provides a walk-in house and the...
Well, what's, well, tell us what your point is.
Well, I'd like to show you...
What's different on the map?
The, the point is that there are what appear to be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight buildable lots that...
Can you show?
Perhaps not, but...
How many copies you have?
I have enough for everyone.
Thank you.
So it's helpful when we're figuring out, you know, where things go, what rights people have, uh, to kind of understand exactly where those, those lots are and what the proposal would be for development, so that I understand whether the deed to my house is still subject to ancestors who might potentially, now that sewer is in there, want to develop the road into a throughway. And I understand there are wetlands and perhaps some of those ten parcels may not, although they may follow the town map right now, may not actually be developable, so it, it may not be an opportunity, but it's good to see that. I think these flat maps should represent subdivision and I'm not sure what the...
I think we get, yeah, we get your, your concept, Ed.
If we give them a sewer, it could open that whole thing up to much more development. Okay. Yes, sir.
So my question is, with the boundary that has been given, are these, are these ten lots subdivided at this point in time?
Paul, is that, is this one big lot? Number three, is that one big lot or is it the eight lots that are on this Google map?
No, it's, it's, it's one big lot. These are lots that, those, those lots on the map have been wiped out. Leo had a survey plan done where he took those eight lots and, and he divided it into two. And what he did technically there was to wipe out that old subdivision, but he did the perimeter plan and created two lots. The subdivision doesn't exist anymore. This, this is an old plan. Assessors' maps haven't been updated yet. They're going to be doing it next year, I believe. But Leo took those eight lots and combined them into two.
Okay. Did you have any other questions, sir?
No, thank you.
I need to get his name out.
I'm sorry, what was your name? McGlaugh, uh...
Matthew McGlaughlin.
McGlaughlin. And he's at...
Nine Bittersweet Drive.
Nine Bittersweet.
Any questions?
One second. Ma'am?
So Eileen Knight, twenty-four Bittersweet Drive. I just wanted on record that thirty-something years ago, this gentleman sat in my living room and told me one thing and then did something else. So I am very concerned about the quality of life that we would have if in fact this was allowed to happen because if there's pipes going in, that means that he's going to build through, somehow you're going to have to get the pipes in, so somehow that passageway is going to be dug up. So all of a sudden, there's a road there. And I want to know what he, the town, can do for us, the people, the residents on that street to guarantee that that's not going to happen. My other concern is if in fact those lots are built, then is there a requirement for fire trucks to get to a house or a development quickly? Because if you're going down Man Hill to Fieldstone to Long Meadow, you're losing minutes. So what is the requirement there?
So I know that that's not our purview, but I understand your concerns. I don't know, I mean, that's more of a planning board issue in terms of, I mean, if he has a right to develop and he has access, then that's his right and it has to go through the planning process, not through the board's selectmen. And I understand your concern is, is the sewer allowing this to, facilitating this? So I don't know the answer to your question. I know there's codes for fire trucks. I don't think a fire truck is going to go through a cul-de-sac through the woods to get to someplace quicker though, unless there's a road.
So just a couple of other questions. So if this was allowed, would it be considered private or public, this piping?
Sewer?
It would be public.
Public, absolutely.
It would be public. Okay, so in that case, would we, would the residents have the choice of, so is it a betterment or is it a privilege?
We haven't decided. I don't know yet. We'd have to vote on how, how that would be. Because we just did it for, for Simmon when we didn't make everybody hook up.
Well, we...
No, they're paying the fees.
They have to pay the fees.
Not all, not all twenty-four houses.
Anyone that hooks up is going to...
Yeah, but don't you worry about this.
They're not paying a betterment.
I think what this woman's saying is if I don't hook up, do I have to pay the betterment?
Yeah, no.
Right, but, but what we discussed in the other, and Kevin will correct me if I'm wrong, is if Mr. Costello's paying for the infrastructure, the town's not incurring the cost of that betterment, so he will assume that whole cost.
He would assume betterment, but they would still pay a prison fee.
He would just pay the connection fee.
The hookup, right, the regular hookup fee, just as if it ran in front of your house.
So would you still then have the option of doing it or not doing it, or is it, would you have to do it?
I think you, it's an option.
Yeah, I think it's an option.
I know, it ran in front of my house for years and it wasn't until I bought it and moved in that it would require that I...
But on your particular case, would you have to tie it?
Right, but the original, the guy was there before me and he didn't hook up.
But if we have, to, to her point, if I could, if we ever did come to a capacity and then you're in failure, you have, you don't have a choice, you have to fix your system.
Right. Right, if we're in a moratorium, you mean?
Right. Is that what I, yeah, that's what I meant to say.
Yeah. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Sorry. I, I see where everyone's concerns are. There's a lot of moving parts on this. To the town, you know, to have, to have a sewer line put in front of your house for free, basically, is a benefit to your, your homes. You will, you will absolutely have benefit of, um, to your housing value. Would Mr. Costello consider, and I don't know if we can even do this, but a deed, deed restriction so that that, that remains a cul-de-sac, that you wouldn't open up that?
Yes, I actually, it's my son who owns the property and he's building the house there now.
That's number three, yeah.
Correct. But I'm sure he would do a deed restriction or something, saying he's not going to, you know...
Make it, make it an avenue.
Right, yeah.
You know, and then to Tony's point, you know, if down the road, you know, obviously that makes your property more valuable as well and if you wanted to develop it and could, that would be something that the planning board would look at and say, you know, you have a deed restriction, you're not allowed to do that.
You could certainly put a deed restriction on me for the amount of hookups which you would allow or something to quell that I'm not going to put in ten homes or something.
You'd be, you'd be open to that?
The problem is, in ten years, if there's a sewer line in front of your house, people would argue and have the right to hook up.
Well, yeah.
That's providing it could be subdivided further and, and I, I don't, yeah, no, it's not, it's not our department, but Leo had said that right from the beginning. He'd be willing to put in a deed, you know, something that said, you know, there's that many hookups and that's all there is. And that's what I was looking at, okay, there are two existing on his property, two new ones, but there are ten existing homes. I figured people would be just as ambitious, ambitious as they were a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that's more restrictive than a deed restriction on a cul-de-sac.
Right. Ma'am?
I have two questions.
Just your name and address.
Erin McGlaughlin, Nine Bittersweet Drive. The first question, I have a question in mind. The second question is, are any of you abutters to Leo and do any of you do business with Mr. Costello?
I do.
What is that business?
Diesel fuel.
Okay, can I read?
Diesel fuel.
So you do, you do business with Mr. Costello?
Yes. Have for about forty years.
Okay, this is a fair question.
Yeah.
Does it sound like you're...
Sean, yeah, no.
Excuse me. It's, no, no, no.
Let's, let's not go there. Yeah, don't even... Sean works in town.
I'm trying to help, not just him, I'm trying to help everyone on Bittersweet. And you, and you, are you tied in? How long have you been there?
Twenty-five years.
Yeah, people have been there a lot longer. People, I, I figured you'd be doing cotwheels to get tied in.
Okay, let's...
Trying to help people, Jesus.
Please don't question integrity up here or anything like that. That's, none of us have bought it. Sean does work with probably four people in this room, so, um, that, that being said. Do you have any other questions?
I'm back to you.
Okay.
Clarifying questions, please. I was not following the discussion about whether people on Bittersweet would have to pay because the line is there, or if they would only have to pay, or they would choose to connect their house to the line if it's built there.
That has not been decided, but I think we believe that if you hooked up, you would pay. If you didn't want to hook up, you wouldn't have to pay.
But there might be...
That would be a privilege.
But there might be a scenario in which a house changes hands...
If your system fails, that...
If the system fails, people may have to, may be compelled to connect only in the event of a failure, not just a transformation.
That, that's assuming you, may I?
Yeah.
So I, I think in a normal situation, if you're going to pass your, you're going to sell your house, Title V fails and you can build a new system, you can build a new system, if it's in front of your house, you can choose to do that instead, is hook it up, hook up, right?
I think if there's a sewer there and your Title V fails, I think you require to hook up.
That's right.
But that's still going to be cheaper than putting in a new Title V system.
Yeah, so either way, you're going to end up incurring that cost.
In that situation, DP and the town comm will require you to do something.
They would, they would make you hook up to the sewer as opposed to put in a new system.
So if it wasn't there and it fails...
But it would be much cheaper if you do that anyways.
You'd be building a new system.
So were it installed, it would be an option, in the event of failure, but not a compulsion after it's installed? Would be one way that this could be done in fairness?
Right.
To have it run down the line.
Kevin, is that what you're thinking as well? That it would be a privilege fee, the hookup would be there and if they wanted to hook up, they'd pay the hookup fee?
It would be a privilege fee. My understanding, Mr. Costello would leave a stub in the road, they would tie into the stub. And I also want to bring up that where it is an E1 system, each house would be required as part of their connection, is to purchase a pump system, probably for about forty-five hundred dollars, have it installed and then brought out to the street and then connect it electrically.
But again, only if they elected to...
If you elect to do that system.
Right, you'd have to do all the work to get your house to the, to the street.
And is it within the select board's power to condition whatever it might improve on not causing, if you abutters on Bittersweet, to incur fees, okay, betterments and to require a deed restriction so that that cul-de-sac lot is not open for a throughway?
I don't, Jim, can we put a deed restriction? That seems...
You can't put a deed restriction on. You only would have to put in a deed restriction.
We could make it a privilege instead of a betterment.
You could require that he put on a deed restriction before he would be, have permission to connect to the sewer system.
Right, my suggestion was...
Say that the property will not be further subdivided or developed, blah, 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 blah. You, you can do that, but just in, you know, complete openness. We had another lot that the town sold that there's a deed restriction on eighteen years ago. And now the person who owns that lot is coming back asking the town to lift the deed restriction so it can be further subdivided. So you can put the deed restriction on, but if any restriction the board puts on, a further board could potentially lift in the future.
Could, could the select board require that the proponent of the, this proposal, put a covenant restriction in his own deed that would benefit the abutters and the neighbors on Bittersweet?
I think what we would do, we're not gonna be the lawyers to make this project work. I think what you have to do is get together with Mr. Costello and figure out what, what, I mean, we're not gonna negotiate whatever you want in your deed restriction. Work it out with him if we choose to put, I mean, we're missing kind of the picture here. We're talking about sewer capacity, not whether he's gonna develop something later. Um, that's gonna have to be between, you're gonna have to work that out with him and then come to us and say, he agrees to do blah, 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 and then we'll talk about it then. Really, the thing that we're talking about is ninety-eight percent and fourteen homes. I think that's, at least that's what's forefront in my mind. Um, so I don't wanna go too far in whatever the deal would be.
Right, thank you. I appreciate that. Right, any, any private deed restriction would have to be a private negotiation, I would imagine.
Right.
But it would currate me that this would be, so it is not the thin wedge, the thin end of the wedge, that this be taken on its own if it is solely a sewer connection and not a jumping off point for development.
I know that he'll talk to you. So get together and talk and figure out what makes everybody comfortable. I get your, your concerns. I would probably have the same thing, you know. Let's talk about the sewer side of things and not really the potential development, he said, she said stuff.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Kevin, is there a sewer on Main Hill Road? Down to St. Francis Church?
There is some of the, yes.
Okay, where's that over here?
Yeah, Fieldstone.
What is that?
Both of them.
That's further.
There's a paper road. It's in, on the, the, the block plan, uh, if we go.
Fieldstone.
I think from Fieldstone to the number three house at least.
That's the road that's on it, but has been...
Redivided. And is that all wet? Isn't that the one that's all wet as well?
That's where the drainage system that the town has runs through those lots.
Any other discussions and then we're gonna try and move forward with the conversation. Everyone good in the, last one, sir?
I have a question to the property owner. If in the nineteen nineties, has he ever buried wetlands in the property?
Okay, I don't, don't even, please. We don't wanna go there. What, don't accuse him of doing something that's...
A bulldozer ran there for weeks and weeks and weeks.
Okay, we're not gonna go there.
That's really an issue for the Conservation Commission?
Okay, thank you.
All right, who has some sort of comment on the topic at hand, which is the sewer system for fourteen houses?
Well, one of the questions we haven't talked about is if, if it went down the street, either, I mean, most of the neighbors seem to be here. Is there anyone that's interested in tying, you know, hooking up, taking advantage of being on the system?
Yes, Lyndon Carroll, fourteen Bittersweet Drive. Our system is all, we've lived in the house for, I'd say, forty-two years. And we know it needs to be, you know, either replaced in the backyard, you know, with the mound and everything, so we would be interested.
And that's to Sean's point a minute ago. Most people love the opportunity to hook up to sewer, so...
I think everybody though, including myself, is concerned about it opening up the street. I didn't wanna change the nature of the neighborhood.
Right, but to talk about the sewer, so my question is, on the sewer, this proposal, we have to look at not just Mr. Costello's, is it four houses? Four houses being added, but potentially fourteen houses. Because if, if this is approved, we're not gonna, unless there's a moratorium, as Tony, as Mr., as Chairman Vignani said, unless there's a moratorium, which is, you know, not a good scenario. And all of you wanted to hook up, we have to answer the question of, can we even do that?
So I agree with Karen, Ms. Canfield, that the number's fourteen, the potential.
Ms. Canfield, it's getting confusing and it's all the press meeting.
And we can't even be KC either.
Is the number not twenty?
It would be thirteen.
Because of the current subdivision, which...
He just said, you're looking at an old plan. That was, that was a subdivision that was in there before that's no longer. There's four properties that they're talking about.
There's no book in that, or signature on that map. I don't know what that is.
Because the assessor's maps haven't been updated yet, sir.
Yeah, but you, you want to get permission for...
I'm not sure what this is. It doesn't show a house.
An engineering map? Then that's a good point.
I guess it could.
But can I make a suggestion? And I, I don't know, um, does it make sense for Mr. Costello to go through the planning board for us to work out some of these issues? Because it just seems like there's a lot of things that have, that really fall under their purview that haven't, that really hasn't been answered yet. And we're kinda putting the cart before the horse again. But I understand it's almost like a catch-22, right? If you can't get sewer, you might, but you're already starting to build anyway, correct?
Probably have a hopes of, yes.
Yeah, so...
And it's, like I said, it's already been subdivided into two, four acre lots, three, four, five, six.
Yeah.
And so...
But there seems to be like a lot of documentation that people wanna see, Mr. Costello, to have that faith, right? I'm not questioning you, but it just seems like there, there is a lot of information that still needs to get out there to put more faith in all the people that are gonna be impacted. So that's my only sort of observation is that, you know, are we doing this before we should be?
Well, I think the reason he's probably doing it is 'cause if we're not gonna give him sewer, why go through that process and the expense of that?
I'd prefer to buy a really complete house.
Sir, I'm sorry. Just please, you gotta be called to speak and, so, I'm gonna, my opinion is, I think you guys could probably work out a deal where they would be fine with some sort of restriction on the property to do it, and they'd all be thrilled that they had sewer. But seeing the look on Will's face when he was telling us about that situation in the sewer, I don't know how we can put any more houses on right now. I mean, ninety-eight point eight percent is just, I, I don't think it's the responsible thing to do right now. I think as soon as we get some I and I in, and we get that number down, like Karen was saying, then this would be a project that could be worked out very easily. I think you could give a deed restriction and they would not worry about a highway going down there, and they would be thrilled that they then have hookups to sewer. But the numbers, we're not even, we're talking crazy high numbers, so, and Will's nodding, which is reaffirming my, my thought here that I don't think, in my opinion, that we can, we can do this right now. And I thought we could two weeks ago, as you'll say, when we gave those other ten hookups. And I didn't realize all the pending projects were bringing it up to a level of real concern, so that's my two cents. Here's Karen.
Tony, my concern is, from a policy standpoint, how many other streets are off of streets that have sewerage that would now be able to come in and say to us, well, we're right off of a main street, we're fourteen houses? You know, I, I don't know how many houses in town are potentially, and how are we doing this process? Is it just a matter of piecemeal people come in? I mean, we've had that happen with sidewalks, where a neighborhood comes in and says, you know, we want a sidewalk, and someone gets a grant from the state and all of a sudden, they've got the sidewalk, but then we don't get any more state grant money because they took it. So, you know, I just feel as though I would rather know how many more houses are off of some of these main streets that could be potentially coming in, and shouldn't we have some sort of a system for them to be able to come in and at least get in, get in line?
Well, twenty years ago, we formed priority districts.
Right.
So the worst areas got sewer first and...
And we're still waiting on a big one, right? North Situate.
Well, that was, yeah, we put a line in down the right away, but that just, just, it just didn't happen. Other priority districts took precedent over North Situate. I just have one other question. Does a, a house, to his point, there's a house that's not on this map that Paul gave us?
Yeah. There's another house.
Four years old.
Right in the back of that one that...
Right here.
Been there for four years, did you say?
Yes. CEO on twenty fifteen.
So Karen, just to your, your point, and I probably brought this up about a year ago, this has to be part of our financing plan of that enterprise fund to bring people onto the system.
Absolutely.
And, um, you know, to generate revenue on infrastructure that we already have. And he's being generous enough to build all the things, which a lot of people won't do. You know, they'll, they'll want a betterment, and all of a sudden, you have to pay it, and you have to pay more than, than the whole of the fees.
And that, and that's exactly the point, is that there are lots of homes that, yeah. It would be quite a burden if we said, hey, we're gonna do this, but it's gonna cost you X dollars in betterment plus the hookup. They'll be like, thank you, go to the next house. Right. But to your point, should we be asking questions like that? We can't, because we don't have the capacity.
Well, we could have been having this conversation at least a year ago. These people could have been here a year ago, if not longer. They would have had this worked out whether up or down, and they would have been before us six months ago. We kept telling Leo to go back, we'll get in touch with you. That's my problem. And then another group, great reason.
Right.
Two meetings, they're tied in, you know, and here, you know.
Yeah, I know.
And whether you agree with it or not, you would've, you guys would've all worked this out maybe a year ago. Kevin, how long have we been asking them to come back and forth?
About a year.
That's what I'm concerned about, okay? Not that I do business with them.
And I, I agree with you, Sean. He's, if he was on the agenda last week instead of this week, it may have been a different story.
These folks would have had, they could have had neighborhood meetings about, you know, but we kept saying, nope, come back.
Well, guys, let's, let's back down a little bit. Do we have to approve all fourteen right now? Like, is there any room around, uh, you know, compromising that, because he's asking for one hookup.
Right now, I need...
Right now, he's asking for one hookup. So is there a way in which we can remove the one hookup and, you know, put this on the, you know, contingent upon I and I, the, the, the balance of it, or? I don't know. That's the problem I have, is that I think we're, I know we have to look at it as all one entity, if you will, but is there a way to stage it, I guess is my question.
Sir, just wait till you're called on and then you can speak.
I mean, the, the issue would be is, if you put the sewer line down there and all fourteen houses said, we wanna hook up now.
We have to allow them, yeah.
I don't know how you say you can't.
Right.
Because you put the sewer line in, it's there.
I do.
You know, and they, the residents have to say, it's gonna be cheaper and easier for us if we bring a contractor now, hook us all up at once than doing a piecemeal over time. I don't know how the board says, well, we got the sewer line there, but you can't hook up to it.
And Paul's gonna say, what if I don't put hookups?
What I'd suggest is, um, Leo puts the line in and the houses, and there's an agreement that, because Leo, um, one option would be to let Leo put the line in and all the stubs. And then when the capacity is available, the houses could tie in. Either they all tie in once or, you know, one at a time, but it'd be subject to the capacity being available. Because they'd be paying a fee, um, whether regard to the sewer being within a public way. Normally, the town would take it over, but if Leo owned that line, you could look at it as being a spaghetti line. There's, there's spaghetti lines in these streets. We have designed several of them. Those are owned by the private individuals. So if anyone wants to tie into them, they have to go to that homeowner. If Leo put this line in and this remained private for a certain amount of time, then the people wouldn't be able to tie in unless Leo gave them permission.
And then if they didn't like the proposal that they were working out with Leo, they run a spaghetti line right beside it. That's why they're called spaghetti lines.
They can't run a spaghetti line in until they go out and do the perk test and show that the soils fail. Then they have to go to the Board of Health, then they have to come back to you.
Right, but I'm just saying that's, you know...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't...
I know, uh, let's get a sense of, you know, even one house at the numbers we're talking about appears to be not the right time to do, um, to me. So we've talked about the, we can either postpone it and discuss it another time if you wanna vote it, or if someone wanna make a motion for something else.
I'd rather, in my opinion, I'd, I'd rather postpone, 'cause I don't wanna vote it down. Because if we fix some of the I and I, I'd like to give them the opportunity to come back.
You can vote it down, you could, but realistically, I and I is not gonna take, is not gonna happen overnight.
No, I know.
Well, if, if we have an approved I and I project that's in the works, then you're creating that capacity almost over time as you're using capacity in the system. So if we had an approved I and I project that we were gonna start doing, that was gonna remove X thousands of gallons a day, then you could say, all right, at the same time we're building this, we're, we're doing the project to create the capacity and they should kinda go hand in hand. The issue is, we don't have any projects right now going on that are creating capacity, with the exception of the ones that are creating capacity for their own project. If that makes sense.
Well, what is the number with, you're ninety-eight point eight percent is assuming seaside's up and all the other things that have been improved are up. What's the number without the projected?
Ninety-three.
The, it's ninety-three, okay.
Ninety-three point nine, so essentially ninety-four.
The Toll Brothers is over a couple of years theoretically, although they're way ahead of schedule as to where they...
Right, so, sorry. Um, so, so we're at nine, yes, it's still a crazy high number, and we're working towards it. To Sean's point, Mr. Costello has come back again and again and again. I, I agree that with Ms. Curran that I, I think we need to postpone because I think you need to come to an agreement with your neighbors. I think they have legitimate concerns. I don't, I think they're completely addressable. But that's something that you guys have to sort out. I would like to see the most, you know, I'd like to go pull the, the current map to make sure we have all the right information so that everyone knows that we're looking at the same information and, and that's a very doable thing. And I do, I don't think that a spaghetti line's the solution. I think if we're gonna go this way, that it should be in the public domain and that we should oversee the, um, the line in the future. I think you're just asking for trouble, uh, 'cause you're digging up a street that people live on. I think it should be ours.
Well, I mean, if I lived in the street, I'd say, why are you digging up my street to put in a sewer line that I can't use?
Exactly, exactly, and there's no...
So, I mean, the threshold question for the board that you kind of identified is, even if you had the capacity, would the board approve this project without some sort of agreement with the residents of Bittersweet? Said, we don't want it without some sort of guarantee that it's not gonna open up. Because we, we have I and I projects that we're hoping get going on that would create some capacity in the system. But would you grant it if the resident said, without some sort of guarantee that this is not gonna become a through street? We don't want it.
Well, and honestly...
I'm gonna give Sean the last word and then we'll...
Just, just one more thought to keep, steal the page from Kevin. Just float the idea of if he fixes an I and I project like we did for Jamie. I mean, we suggested it to Jamie, making which, at the last meeting, if we identify, and I just throw that out there.
No, I agree, I...
So I, I kinda like Marne's idea.
So what's a manhole cost and what's the projected I and I for a manhole cover replacement?
Uh, manholes are tough to pin down. Uh, to replace a manhole, it's probably about five hundred in materials and...
Twelve hundred bucks for a manhole.
Yeah.
To put in a sealed manhole?
Put in a sealed manhole, probably about twelve hundred bucks.
And it doesn't really do much to take out I and I unless it's against the rain. So if it's tidal or groundwater info infiltration, just do a manhole cover. Doesn't really give any gains.
All right, so I'm gonna just take a temperature of the board and correct me if I'm wrong. I suggest you get together with the neighbors and see if you can work out something that, that they can all agree with, that it's, that they're accepting of the project, and that I think we should postpone this until we figure out either I and I situations or a way to do it. Or maybe you guys feel differently. I just, that number's way too high right now. And we've gotta have something to counterbalance it to get more houses on there. Because I think we are opening it up to fourteen or houses at least if we do this project.
Well, I'd make a motion to, to do the project, but I'm probably alone, so...
I don't know. You can make the motion.
Well, I mean, and if it, and if it should fail, can, what does that mean? Can he come back? Six months?
Yeah, it's not a zoning article, so if you vote it down, he can come back anytime he wants.
All right, I move to approve the extension of an existing sewer line to ten homes on Bittersweet Lane. Numbers ten, eleven, fourteen, fifteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty and thirty-one, and four homes on Long Meadow Road, three, nine, twenty-nine and twenty-nine area, beating all the requirements of the town of Situate Sewer Department.
Any second? There's no second, so the motion fails. I would also suggest someone getting together with someone in DPW and figuring out how you can make it work so maybe only one house gets hooked up and there's some sort of agreement that everyone can buy into that, that that works. Okay? All right, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, neighbors, for hearing what...
Tony, you're on schedule.
The next item is, um, the eight-thirty item. The discussion goes for appointment of special labor council. Jim Boudreau, Town Administrator?
Yeah, I've just, very quickly, we have an issue with some employees that requires labor council. Our current labor council has a conflict, is unable to deal with it, so it asked the board to allow me to hire a special labor council to handle some employee issues that we have.
And you have a labor council in mind?
Uh, Hugh, and, uh, Hugh Curran, yes. Attorney Hugh Curran.
Conflict of interest?
No, it's not. I don't, I don't know anyone by the name. Oh, you.
What?
Didn't you say conflict of interest to me?
Conflict is, is labor council.
Oh, I'm like, no.
In this particular case, our labor council has a conflict, so we need to hire someone else to handle it.
Would you like a motion, Tony?
Yes, please.
Move to appoint special labor council. Move to approve an appointment of special labor council.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, second by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, five zero. Okay, now, new business. We have a one-day malt and... Wine and malt license? You have a motion?
Move that the board of selectmen approve one-day wine and malt licenses to tailor-made bartending for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on May twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, from twelve to four P M. Do we do this separately or together?
Do them separately.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Move that the board of selectmen approve one-day wine and malt license to Reeve Restaurant for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on June first, two thousand nineteen, from eleven...
eleven A.M. to three P.M. Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the next one, is some annual license renewals?
Davis Parking Lot. Move to, the Board of Selectmen approve the parking lot license to the Davis Family Trust Davis Parking Lot for the two thousand and nineteen season.
Second.
Second, further discussion? This is a lot over by Hummer Rock, right to the left of the entrance. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And the Hawker Peddler licenses?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve Hawker Peddler licenses to South Shore Refreshments LLC doing business as Dell's Lemonade for the two thousand and nineteen season.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a Hawker Peddler license to Burt's Ice Cream for the two thousand and nineteen season.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we do it?
Yep.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a Hawker Peddler license to Ahmed Akala Tabi doing business at Zack's Ice Cream for two thousand and nineteen season, for the twenty-seventh year he's done it.
Second.
Second by me, Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the Hawker Peddler license to Nona's Ice, uh, homemade, sorry, Nona's Homemade Inc. for two thousand and nineteen season.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Maureen, we're not doing areas for these things like we did years ago.
These are established.
So they just go wherever they want?
Yes, they're established, they go wherever they want, they follow the Hawker Peddler policy.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Other business? We have any liaison reports? Karen?
I don't have any liaison.
You roll at the next meeting.
Now, when do we do that? Next week?
Next meet.
Just give Karen anyone you don't want.
That's what I figured would happen.
Maureen, anything?
Nope. Set Conservation last night, so they're moving forward the fields and should, they're going out to bid for the, not the fields, you know what I mean? The, all the parking lots, so they're going out to bid for all the parking lots soon, so hopefully we can get that done, so folks can start going through our, walking through our trails. That's what I meant, trails.
Great.
Sorry, wrong thing.
Anyone else?
No, no, you go first. The Shellfish Commission has been on fire. I might need a backup. They meet like once a week, so, let me see if I can, the last meeting, so, they had a drone fly over, showed an aerial map, they had Greg Moore do a little engineering, because one of the commission members has a relationship with them, so he did some preliminary, preliminary things. Jim O'Kade, some title searches, really minimal amount of money, just to.
About four hundred bucks.
All right, just to make sure the lines are what they are. And so they are just really enthusiastic. They are talking about how people are gonna, individuals or groups are gonna come up with these plots, whether it be a lottery system and, or wait, you know, first come, first served, experience. So they're just really, really busy. It's very exciting stuff. Sounds like we might partner with Cohasset, maybe, it's, you know, I mean, we bought it right there, so, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, you know, access and things like that. They've, they're really excited and, you know, so.
Can we ask, do you, do you have an update on the Widows Walk work? That's fun to say.
I can.
Oh, is that, oh, is that you?
Yeah, that's our committee. So they're just as enthusiastic, and they're coming to present to us in the next couple of meetings.
And I'm meeting with them tomorrow night.
Okay.
Yeah, so they've got capital plans, marketing plans, and another really enthusiastic group.
What are some of their ideas?
They'd shoot me by.
Don't.
Oh, geez, you're not liberty to say.
They would.
They almost don't want to talk about it when they're at the meetings, like, he's here.
Champagne wishes and caviar dreams, but I have to go tomorrow night and say.
Yeah.
Fell down.
But that's, that's a good problem.
That's okay.
Just rare to go.
Have limited resources, and we're gonna have to tailor our plan to the resources.
Well, that subject, can I, I mean, you probably don't know, but this rain can't be helping the rounds.
It's bad.
Have we looked recently? We've had good Saturdays.
Yeah, it's been really crowded.